Hi, good evening. Good evening, everyone. We'll get started. Wow, that was, that was quick. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. This is a public meeting of the school board of the West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours in advance of the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted at the entrance doors, at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I'd ask our superintendent to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great. Thank you. Invite you to rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We recognize a quorum of our board present tonight. Paul Fisher will be absent and is excused. And also, we have Toni Schmidt, who's dialed in virtually. And just to confirm, Toni, are you there?
Yes, hello.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. All right. So the next item on our agenda is to approve the agenda, and the agenda was posted in advance. I would move approval of the agenda. Would there be a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor? Ah, we've got to do a roll call vote because we have Toni dialing in virtually. So I will do a roll call vote. Mr. Fisher is absent. Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Angert?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. Thank you. Our agenda is approved. So we're going to start with some recognitions tonight. Recognition of Winter State qualifiers. And we're going to start by recognizing the East Dance Team. And I believe that Molly Hanks, East Athletic Director, is going to come up and introduce these folks. And actually, before you begin, we like to have the folks stand here for recognition. And we're doing something a bit different. I'm told that the camera behind me is the one that's going to be doing the close-up. So if you folks come forward, you need to face us. Normally, I had you face the crowd. So I'll turn it over to you. Just wanted to give you a little advanced warning there.
Thank you. I think we're ready. I'm excited to be here. We, we had a heck of a season with this dance team. And I'm going to introduce my head coach. Her name is Amanda Raskwitz, and she's going to explain how this season ended. Well, it's sort of still going because they're going to, they're going to perform this Thursday at the boys' basketball game. But she's going to talk to you about their state experience. Come on up.
Hello. Oh, sorry. I'm getting over a cold, so I sound awful. This year was really special for us going to state. It's actually the first time in East history that the dance team got a bid for two different routines to go to state. So really big for us. We had a great time at state. We have, half of our team is freshmen, so it was their first time. And then, a lot of our, the rest of our team, because of how last year went, didn't get to go to state in person. So for a lot of them, it was their first time. And being a new coach this year, it was my first time going as well. So very exciting for us. We ended up placing fifth place in our kick routine, and we were one-tenth of a point out of fourth place. So that hurt a little, but still super exciting for us. And then we took 11th with our jazz routine. We also had a all-state solo finalist. And also, we had a fourth-place small group and a sixth-place trio in the state, which those two were done virtually in, right after Christmas. So we had almost everything we took placed, which is awesome. So we look forward to keeping that momentum going the rest of this year, and then getting to start hopefully right about the same spot next year.
Congratulations.
Why don't we have you go down the line and tell us your name and what grade you're in? And just on a personal note, I, my family and I saw this team perform a few times this year, and this team really knows how to kick, was something that stood out to us. So why don't we have you introduce yourselves?
I'm Abby.
I'm Sarah.
And I'm a, oh, I'm a junior.
I'm Caitlin.
I'm a junior.
I'm Arianna.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm Michaela.
I'm a freshman.
I'm Audrey.
I'm a freshman.
I'm Gian.
I'm a freshman.
I'm Merle.
I'm a freshman.
We do have one more senior that couldn't make it tonight.
Cool. Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. And now, we're going to recognize the West Dance Team. And Erin Felber, West Athletic Director, will kick us off. Good evening.
I am thrilled to be here to recognize our awesome West Dance Team. But before I call them up, I just want to take this opportunity to thank our head coach, Amanda Motor. She and her husband are going to be starting their family this year, so she's stepping down as the head coach. She's been our head coach for the past four years and assistant coach for two years prior to that. So I can't thank Amanda enough. She's done a wonderful job. And I know our team is really going to miss her, including myself. And let's bring Amanda Motor up so we can talk about our West Dance Team.
So first, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the school board for recognizing our team and their incredible accomplishments this season. This season, we qualified for state in our D3 Pomerteen. Our Pomerteen ended up, ended up taking sixth place, missing fifth place trophy by only three points and about 10 points away from third place. So it was a really incredible season and a really, really awesome performance that they had. They were absolutely flawless and executed just perfectly. We couldn't ask for anything more. We also had our junior Rachel Hopper qualify for state in her D2 solo, and her solo made the D2 All-State Team for 2022. So Rachel's accomplishment will be printed in next year's state program, recognizing her being on the D2 All-State Team for this year. So thanks again to the school board for recognizing the girls and their incredible, their incredible hard work over the past nine months. So I will just kind of run down from grade. So we have, so we'll have Ava Kahoot. She's a senior. And then next to her, we have Sarah Drogueski, also a senior. Olivia Mathie, our last senior. Lauren Seidel is our junior. Rachel Hopper, junior, and our D2 All-State Team. And then Lacey Justman, also a junior. And then we have Olivia O'Connor. She is our sophomore. And then we have Iris Spores, who is also a sophomore, followed by Caitlin, a sophomore as well, Caitlin McFarland. And then Elena Lor Kugel, who is also a sophomore. And then we have our beautiful freshman Addison Dent, and then Riley Bushkey. So thank you guys again.
Again, on a personal note, to have the chance to watch this team too. This team really knows how to pom. And it's, it's just funny seeing the differences between the East Team and the West Team. The East Team kind of, they're the kicking team, and this is the pom team. And both teams were just awesome this year. So congratulations.
Not to put Ms. Felber and Molly on the spot, but I will. I don't know the last time that we've had two teams in the same sport go to state. So I think that's a huge accomplishment. Both dance teams have been to state multiple times. I would guess probably more than any other sport in our district, if I had to guess. So it's a huge accomplishment. I think another little unknown fact about dance is that it's actually a three-season sport. These girls start in April, and they go all the way until February or March. So long, long, long season. Congratulations to both. And you guys really looked great, and it was so cool to see West Bend doubly represented. So congratulations, everybody.
Well, thank you to everyone for coming tonight. I think we've settled, settled in. We always appreciate these opportunities to recognize folks that have worked hard, demonstrated So the next item on our agenda is public participation. teamwork. And before I begin, anyone who wishes to address the board could fill out a public Congratulations again. What I'll do, though, is I will pause, because we know it's a school night, and we love participation comment card. it when people join us for the entire duration of a school board meeting. I've received seven so far. I'll just ask, are there any, are there any more that anyone wishes to bring forward But it, I'll pause at this time. at this time? Anyone who wishes to leave at this point may. All right. Hearing none, I will read our Board Policy 187 summary. Again, know it's a school night, know the weather's a little bit iffy. So I'll just pause. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. You don't need to be embarrassed, and we'll, we'll pick up here in a moment. Board Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures for this segment. Thanks. I summarize a policy at this time, but copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name, address, and relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to a superintendent, to a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints. And Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as they guarantee a fair and timely response. So I will invite participants forward to speak. We have a visible timer on the screen to help you manage your time. And also, within our participants, I will indicate who's coming up to the podium and then who's, who's on deck. And to help ensure that all of our participants are, are heard and that the meeting runs efficiently, I'm going to ask people refrain from conversation, comment, applause during or after public participation comments. All right. That being said, again, I mentioned we had seven participant comment cards. So I invite first, Corinne Freund to the podium, and Chris Thompson would be on deck. Ms. Freund, I've got your address here per the comment card. It says that you are a parent. The floor is yours.
I'm going to tell you a story regarding events that took place this last week involving my son, other students, the administration of Badger and Silverbrook. I'll keep my statement somewhat vague because it involves minors and an open district investigation. My statement today is backed now by a close police investigation. Past week, my son came home and said, "Mom, today was the best and worst day ever. The kid attacked me again, and now the police are involved. He might actually stop." My heart sank as my son explained the situation to me. I gave my son the Advice, Advice Weeks plier to ignore the kid, but I had no depths, no idea of the depths of the situation at the time. A few weeks back, the kid started a fight with my son at Badger while waiting for the bus. My son was ignoring the kid, just as I told him to do. So the kid decided to punch my son in the back of the head and then the mouth, causing blood drawn. It was reported to the administration, but I was not contacted. Two weeks ago, the kids on the bus were having a roasting battle, not of great taste, but their kids. The same kid got upset and decided to attack my son, three other boys, and swung a backpack at a girl just sitting in her seat. It was reported. I was not contacted. Two Fridays ago, the same kid brought a wooden shank and went after my son again on the bus. The kid got up from his seat, moved to the back where my son sat, and stabbed the seat in front of my son, knocked my son's glasses off of his face. He can't see without them. He proceeded to try to stab my son in the neck and the chest as my son grabbed onto this and fought it off. What didn't happen? He liked the way my son looked at him. It was reported to administration, and I was never contacted. Last Wednesday, the kid managed to hide a fiberglass snowflake in his jacket as he entered the bus. He spent the bus ride poking other students in the head. When my son was leaving the bus, he took that fiberglass stake and struck him across the back of his head and his neck. My son struck him back because he had enough. The kid decided to bite him on the hand. What happened? He went to the administration. That's the day my son finally told me about everything that was going on at school. No one took pictures of his bite marks. No one sought medical attention. Mouths have really bad bacteria. What did the fiberglass lodge into his skin? Who has a legal right to make these medical decisions? Me. I am his parent. I have rights. I was never contacted for any of these events, not one single one by one administrator of West Bend, Badger, or Silverbrook. The weapons were never collected. He was never examined for any injuries. To top it off, that kid wasn't even supposed to be on the bus. He was suspended for the previous acts.
Here you go. If you want to see what my son was threatened with, take a good look.
Could you like me to pass this around, or what am I supposed to do with this?
I didn't mean to throw it next door.
All right. Next, invite Mr. Chris Thompson to the podium, and Ms. Leana Dronzo would be on deck. Mr. Thompson, I have your address here on the card. It says you're a resident and a parent, and so the floor is yours.
Okay. I'm going to continue the talk that Corinne had given. The actions of your administration are of gross negligence, horrendous safety risks, hold potential lethal ramifications, were illegal, broke at least four district policies, and are damaging to the psychological health of minors. Teachers, students, and parents have all painted a picture regarding the atmosphere within West Bend School District. I have sat here as the presentation on school safety was given to the school board. This presentation was given months after the request was made to the superintendent. But here's the catch. Out of the 11 administrators from the middle and high schools, 10 administrators didn't even show. How is that acceptable to you? You were given a bunch of graphs focusing on data and procedures of the school, grade schools. No questions were asked, with the exception of Nancy's, but she even apologized for asking questions. No answers were given to the students', parents', and teachers' claims, but lots of jokes and smiles and spin was given. In the past week, as I sat in Badger's office in front of administration and the school resource officer, I found out the resource officer had no idea about the three previous attacks until we gave the statement that day. No one from administration thought that was important? I was also informed that the principal of Silverbrook, Lance Rel, decided on the punishment of the kid. What punishment was given, you ask? A seven-day bus suspension. I no longer need a presentation from your administration to see how punishments are administered, the level of safety in our schools, and the competence of the administration to handle serious situations. How does a kid use a wooden shank against another child, then have the opportunity to bring another weapon to school? This is how school shootings happen. What does the kid bring next? I ask how is this even possible? I am told there is no cross-jurisdiction between schools, and the district does not have any standards for discipline, meaning a kid who brings a weapon to school does not have an automatic suspension. Every punishment given is up to the administrators to decide. My son is a minor. I have legal rights as his parent to be informed. Put yourself in my situation. You all have kids. How would you feel? Just this morning, I received a phone call from the Badger Vice Principal to inform me that this kid was on the bus again this morning, direct insubordination. The level of incompetency, incompetency in everything surrounding the situation is astonishing. Is this a joke to the principal of Silverbrook, to the district? Four assaults, two with a weapon, two direct insubordinations against a suspension. I want to vomit. I want to make it clear, I am so upset at this kid for what he has done, but I am even angrier at the administration. This is a child who has been part of the district for four years, has shown patterns. This is not his first nor fourth time. The district has failed this child. He clearly needs help, and the administration had to know of this. In addition, administrators told me they know there is a big problem on buses with the age difference of Silverbrook and Badger kids. Has the school board ever heard of this concern? They claim it would take around $600,000 to do an independent bus route, and there is no money. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. And we invite Ms. Leana Dronzo?
Dronzo.
Dronzo, thank you. And Ms. Jenny Thompson is on deck. The floor is yours.
Yeah, I'm Leana Dronzo. I'm a homeowner, and I will be continuing Corinne's speech. So this school board has passed tax levies for a total of 20.52% in increases over the last three years. One on top of another, even as attendance falls, this burden is pushed onto the citizen taxpayers. From FOIA requests, I know the district has received countless grants, some even from the DOJ titled "School Safety Grants," but this district wasted that money on the ideals of Second Step and woke seminars for the staff. And here's the kicker: you, the school board, approved it all. So here is the question I will ask you. Where is the safety? Where are the repercussions? When is someone on this board actually going to wake up and look into any of these things? What kids should be fearful of getting shanked on the bus in West Bend? How can a child be expected to learn when these acts are happening? I can tell you, as a parent, taxpayer, and someone who actually gives a rip, I am fed up. You asked to be in that seat. You fought to be elected. You asked to be held accountable. You asked to represent the parents and children of this district. Every single meeting, you all vote for the district requests like a bunch of bobbleheads. You vote against the requests of the public, students, and parents who elected you. It's time to buckle up and actually fulfill the job you signed up for, or resign.
All right. Ms. Jenny Thompson can come forward, and Mr. Cameron Merkel would be next on deck. And Ms. Thompson, I've got your address on the public participation comment card here, and it says you're a parent.
I am.
The floor is yours.
All right. Thank you. These are the policies, promises, procedures, protocols, and Wisconsin DPI standards that the administration failed to follow through with on Silverbrook and Badger concerning Corinne's speech and what happened to her son. The, on the DPI website, there is "Wishes: Wisconsin Improving School Health Services Project," and it states that every school has an emergency procedure for illness. And one of the things listed is the responsible authority or designated employee should notify the parent. Failed. In the parent handbook for our schools, on bus safety, just to keep in mind, it states "to provide a safe and pleasant bus ride," and the bus is considered an extension of the school. Now, for this policy that will be pertinent, "policy to suspend a student in our school district for conduct while at school or under the supervision of school authority, which endangers the safety and health of others." Failed. What's the policy to expel in our district? You can be expelled for engaging in conduct while at school under the supervision of school authority and endangering the health and safety of others. Failed. West Bend School District Policy 882, the following guidelines are to be used by administrators when a police liaison or law enforcement officer interviews a student at school. Notify the parents and guardians when the student, if they are a minor, and inform them before the meeting takes place. Failed. The policies, Policy 443.71, anti-bullying. Failed. Policy on items prohibited on school property, weapons of any sort or items that could be construed as weapons. Failed. Parent-Student Handbook, sick or injured at school. If your child requires treatment beyond first aid, we will call the emergency contact or the child's home. Failed. And if the, if her son would have, Corinne's son would have been looked at by the school nurse, there are probably more, but I only printed out three procedures that should take place. Bites, human or animal. This was obviously a human bite. There are 16 steps. Every single one of them was ignored. One of them is contact the parent and urge immediate medical care because it's so serious. Head injury, when he got hit in the head on the bus when he knocked his glasses off. 14 steps. Every single one ignored. One of them is contact the parent and urge medical care because that's very serious. Puncture wounds. Did he have a puncture wound? No one at the school would know. They never looked. 14 steps. All ignored. The administration at Silverbrook and Badger failed to not, not only Corinne and her son, but they ignored signs to get this attacker help before it went this far. I hope the board takes this seriously and disciplines these administrators for negligence and expels that student. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Cameron Merkel, you may come forward, and Mr. John Donaldson will be on deck. And Mr. Merkel, I have your address, and it says that you are a student, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. The floor is yours.
All right. Good evening. I'm not doing a continuance of Corinne's speech, but I just want to say after hearing that, I am, my stomach has turned upside down. That is absolutely disgusting, what has happened. But as my bi-weekly update on the heat in the high school, I emailed Ms. Wimmer right after the last meeting about certain classrooms that are still on the cold side. For instance, I was in my social studies room on February 7th during Period 4A, which is from 10:28 to 11:16 a.m., and the room was so cold, the desks were cold to touch, and other students were also complaining about the temperature. This is why I emailed Wimmer to add it to the list of rooms that need to be checked. And it was checked an hour later and was tested at 73 to 74 degrees. To me, that is not accurate. So I emailed Wimmer back and had them check again, and this time, Mr. Schloss went into the room, and again, it came back as 74 degrees. None of us believed that this was the temperature when we were in the room. The reason the rooms are colder is because due to COVID-19, the school, the school has to pump in 20% more cold air than before. But I feel like that should not be an excuse. Students in that specific room feel the cold air as it is constantly being blown on them. This is something that needs to be looked into. I just feel like when the rooms get checked, they come back warm, even though they feel colder to the students. I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone because it doesn't seem like I'm being believed. However, a couple of classrooms that I emailed Wimmer about were in fact fixed, so I thank you for that. But now, moving on to student behavior in the high school, which I spoke about a little last, last time, last meeting. There's still a, a small fringe minority of students that wander the halls throughout the day. I have witnessed this group of students hanging out in the library lounge area when they are not allowed to. I have also witnessed their disrespect to staff when they are told by a teacher or staff member to report to class. They refuse, are loud, use offensive language, and are disrespectful to the staff member that tries to enforce the rules or tell them to leave. To me, that is ridiculous. Why does this problem continue day after day? I think students continue to act this way because they are not being held accountable. We need to have stricter consequences for students who do not go to class and are disrespectful to staff. We also need more supervision in the halls during passing and class time, especially if we want the West Bend High Schools to have a good reputation, higher enrollment, and raise our DPI scores. Between the school year 2016 to 2017, we had approximately 6,824 students enrolled in the district. In 2022, or excuse me, in 2020 to 2021, we had 5,941. That is an 876 student decline. Clearly, we are doing something wrong. I yield my final time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Before anyone else goes, can we figure out what that noise is?
Right. Let's take a pause.
It's like someone's singing. Was it on someone's computer or something? Phone?
All right. I think it's quieted down out of respect for our next speaker. All right. Mr. John Donaldson, and then Mr. Jason Penterman is on deck. Mr. Donaldson, pause for a second there.
Sure.
All right. Mr. Donaldson, I have your address. Says you're a parent and resident of the district.
Correct.
The floor is yours.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm here actually just speaking on behalf of a group of teachers that have come to me with some concerns, don't know why they confided in me. Maybe it's because I'm running for school board. Maybe they're looking for some different perspective.
I have also witnessed their disrespect to staff when they are told by a teacher or staff member to report to class. They refuse, are loud, use offensive language, and are disrespectful to the staff member that tries to enforce the rules or tell them to leave. To me, that is ridiculous. Why does this problem continue day after day? I think students continue to act this way because they are not being held accountable. We need to have stricter consequences for students who do not go to class and are disrespectful to staff. We also need more supervision in the halls during passing and class time, especially if we want the West Bend High Schools to have a good reputation, higher enrollment, and raise our DPI scores. Between the school year 2016 to 2017, we had approximately 6,824 students enrolled in the district. In 2022, or excuse me, in 2020 to 2021, we had 5,941. That is an 876 student decline. Clearly, we are doing something wrong. I yield my final time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, before anyone else goes, can we figure out what that noise is?
Right, let's take a pause.
It's like someone's singing. Was it on someone's computer or something? Phone?
I think it's quieted down out of respect for our next speaker. All right. Mr. John Donaldson and then Mr. Jason Pennerman is on deck. Mr. Donaldson, pause for a second there.
Sure.
All right. Mr. Donaldson, I have your address. It says you're a parent and resident of the district.
Correct.
The floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm here actually just speaking on behalf of a group of teachers that have come to me with some concerns, don't know why they confided in me. Maybe it's because I'm running for school board. Maybe they're looking for some different perspective. Unfortunately, it does kind of go along with Corinne's and everybody else's speeches with the concern of behavioral issues at Silverbrook. The first point I'll bring up is, one of the first things that they'd mentioned is that they're feeling a very lack of support with behavioral issues. They can't send kids to the principal office because they get sent back if they do. Because kids are supposed to be going to a counselor's office, which apparently we have a vacancy in a position for that or no position for them to go. So the teachers have basically said that they'll send kids down to the office, they'll get sent right back with no repercussions, no, nobody calling home, just like they've been saying. So basically, we have no consequences. Kids are getting too many warnings, is another concern that they're saying. And the teachers, the teachers just don't feel supported. When they attempt to create a better learning environment for our children, you know, they're just basically pushed back into the classroom and turned back around. So, I mean, if we have a vacancy in a critical position like this, I don't know if we're not looking at that. We need to address that issue. And like I said, this is me speaking on behalf of a teacher that has reached out to me with some concerns. Another issue that they said is that children in Silverbrook are showing pornography on the bus. Now, a student that had reported this didn't get any, nothing happened to the student that actually did it. So now this student has to walk past, because I guess the only issue, the only thing that happened to the student that showed the pornography is they got moved to the front of the bus. So now the student that reported it has to walk past this student every time they go to the bus and get heckled, get harassed, whatever's happening. But it's obviously a very uncomfortable position for this student. We have a major issue with our district, guys. We have, it starts at the top. We're not supporting our teachers, we're not supporting the good people that we have, and that's why we continue to lose them. We need to look at something different or change our policies on how we're handling these disruptive students. Because if we don't, we're not going to have, we're going to fall further in line with our numbers. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, and our last speaker is Mr. Jason Pennerman. I have your address on the card here and it says you are employee, resident, and a parent in the district. Is that correct?
Correct.
Great. The floor is yours.
Thank you. This is regarding voucher school choice property tax hikes. Representative Robert Whitkey, Republican, Racine recently created Assembly Bill 970 to expand Wisconsin's voucher school program. The bill expands voucher school student eligibility by removing income limits for all three of Wisconsin's school voucher programs: the Racine and Milwaukee parental choice programs and the statewide Wisconsin parental choice program. The bill also lifts the cap on how many pupils can participate in the statewide program. In 2019, Wisconsin's voucher program cost $349.6 million for 43,450 students. $145.3 million was withheld or deducted from public school districts to fund the program, according to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Your local public schools responded to lost revenue by raising property taxes, cutting programs, or both. According to the Wisconsin Examiner, February 17, 2022, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, DPI, prepared an estimate of Bill 970's fiscal impact. It showed the voucher expansion would cost property taxpayers as much as $577 million in 2022-23, an increase of $227.4 million, or 65%. Whitkey and co-sponsors Senator Alberta Darling, Van Weingard, Dewey Strobel, all are exploiting the flawed voucher idea, the state subsidizing private schools to fix Milwaukee and Racine's poverty issues. Bill 970 means political contributions and votes for them, and out-of-control property tax increases and public school program reductions for you. No locally-elected citizens on school boards will oversee the voucher of school's students, staff, operations, or curriculum. School board candidates who support voucher schools are compromising our founders' rationale for constitutional separation of church and state. They want their private education paid for by you and your property taxes and withholdings and deductions from your community's private schools, public schools. A vote for school voucher supporters is a vote to damage your school's budget for student learning activities. Voting for a school choice voucher supporter is a vote to raise your taxes. Say no to Assembly Bill 970, say no to school voucher expansion, damage to your public schools, and raising your property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is the last participant comment card I have, just in case I missed any. Are there any other ones before I close public participation? All right. Well, seeing none, I want to thank all the speakers for coming, for sticking to their time limits, and also for those in attendance who contributed to make sure that we had a fair and neutral and non-intimidating environment for folks to share their thoughts. So appreciate that. And as Board Policy 187 says, we're not able to respond directly to these, but Superintendent Wimmer, I'm guessing there will be a number of follow-up items coming from this. Perfect.
Just publicly, and I can certainly put it in my remarks, but we would echo all the concerns, thank people for coming forward, sharing, create opportunities for students, staff, or anyone. If you're reporting at the school level, something's not resolved, you can feel free to contact Lenny Hansen in HR, myself, so that we can fully investigate. Now, I can say that this was previously reported. At the end of last week, there is, as mentioned, a formal investigation that is in process. The next time the board would hear this, it would be through closed session as it'll deal with minor students, discipline, and personnel. So you'll see that on upcoming agendas.
All right, we look forward to that on an upcoming agenda. All right, we'll move on then to our consent agenda. And on our consent agenda, we have minutes of the February 27, 2022 regular board meeting. We have no certified staff contracts or resignations or retirements, but we also have a winter guard out of trip, out of state trip request for review and approval. Were there any questions on the consent agenda? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda. I'll pause. Any final discussion? All right, roll call vote? Old habits die hard.
She's on.
All right. I will do the roll call vote. Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher is absent. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Swigertfords?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. Thank you, the consent agenda is approved. And we're on to reports. And our first report is our superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer?
Thank you. And again, just to address, the next time you'll see comments that were brought forward specifically would be around that investigation, you'll see that in closed session. And urge people, whether it's students, staff, families, community members, if you see something, say something, whether that's to us, the local police. We work hand in hand. If they were to receive a complaint from their tip line, they would notify us as well and we intern them as needed. So thank you for that. Speaking of COVID, because we always seem to, our numbers look fantastic. We are seeing a little illness at Decorah, non-COVID related. Local public health, as foreshadowed, is convening tomorrow. We continue to back off of our mitigation, having classroom operations return to what we would think of as typical. We reduced out much of any kind of requirements. There was a lingering piece around the public health requiring if students came back from having COVID, days six through 10, they were requiring mask usage. It was something that we stated. Families could or couldn't participate, they didn't have to if they didn't want to. That'll be moved to a recommended. Community burden is trending down. Our local numbers are trending down. They'll also be foreshadowing a lift in contact tracing. They will continue to contact trace in vulnerable populations, which is for them, nursing homes, and we'll continue to look at contact tracing, watching large-scale numbers. We'll scale back our dashboard so it's just a little more clean, concise, letting you know how many cases are at each school. You can see the numbers are looking well as far as that's related. We're really confident in kind of backing ourselves out of those measures and restoring practice. Again, you know, we had been a lot of recommended items, but nothing required. There is one piece that is out of our control or jurisdictions, that was the federal mandate around masking requirements in public transportation, which included school buses. We are hearing rumblings and rumors of that sunsetting, given the trajectory and numbers, but have nothing definitive. So I'll continue to monitor that. Are there any questions about? Can we? Yeah, go for it.
Of course, I have some.
Go for it.
Contact tracing, you said we are doing?
So contact tracing, we currently do. We're doing to an individual student level to let you know proximity, then scaling to a classroom level. That's easier at the elementary schools. We'll continue to alert if there was a case in a classroom secondary with the amount of switching, just monitor the dashboard. Our numbers have been very, very low. Secondary schedules would be inclusive of anywhere from Silverbrook, Badger, or high school. We can do some notifications by house at the Silverbrook level, but that'll shift a little bit different for our secondary schedules.
Okay. I'd love to see that go away as much as possible.
Yeah, like I said, we'll continue to monitor just general illness. And if we see something and then, you know, if you're getting into, you know, double digits of percentages of students out, then you would probably do some contact tracing in that element. What we will do is, like I said, if we see all of a sudden an expansion of illness somewhere, we'll alert people. Just because, you know, perhaps someone is more vulnerable at home, maybe they're intergenerational living, there's a lot of circumstances. So if we were to see that to that level, we would just notify families so that they could make a choice that makes sense for them.
Okay. It's just, I got to imagine a lot of resources have been used in that, so it'd be nice to get some of those back.
Absolutely.
So several questions, comments, not to speak directly to anything that's happened or we've heard about this evening. How many bus routes do we have that represent Silverbrook and Badger? Anybody?
I'd have to get you the exact numbers.
At least three in Jackson, or there was.
And how many administrators do we have total at both schools?
You have a principal at each school, you have an assistant principal at school, and a dean of students at Badger.
So for instance, if we have five routes, could we not suggest that we have all five administrators ride a bus every single day for the next two weeks?
There's actually a plan in place. We sent a brief, I think they jointly sent a letter to families regarding the increase in student incidences on the bus, and I believe they've worked on ridership for the next, I believe they've done it for 20 days, and I put a schedule in play.
So we have actual administrators on the bus?
I don't know who's on what day, but I know that that was a conversation that was had with them.
Well, I personally would like to see administrators ride the bus because clearly we've got some issues that have to be cleaned up, and I think that that comes better from administration rather than a teacher, because they have to deal with the kids all day at school. So I'd rather see that be our principals and our assistant principals, and I'd like to see it morning and evening, not just morning, not just evening. And then, I have totally lost my train of thought and...
We will get that information and then use it as a follow-up item so you can see what that schedule was.
Perfect. Oh, my other comment was, the last time we had spoke about behavior and I had expressed my disappointment in the fact that we did not have the middle school principals here, so I'd like to suggest that we have both Mr. Rell and Mr. Allman here directly to talk about the behavior issues and some of the consequences, like we had from the other teachers, but I would like to see both of those schools represented here on the same night together.
So actually, what we had in place, and you'll see one this evening, we did an overview of some generalities. Then each school will actually be coming before the board with a presentation on academics as well as behavior, specific to their schools. Tonight, we have Decorah and Silverbrook this evening. We can certainly do a follow-up just related with the middle level around behavior.
I just think that's critical because that was definitely a missing piece last time, and I think that, not just myself, but I believe other parents were interested in that as well.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Any other questions about COVID?
No, can I? Can I go back?
We can.
And if there's not an answer right now, I just want to get it out, or we'll forget it. There was talk about this student possibly getting on the bus even though they weren't supposed to be on the bus. And I guess I understand why the bus driver would not, may not know, because that might not be the regular bus driver, or whatever the situation is. Obviously, the parents should be taking care of that, but obviously, that didn't happen. So I guess I'm going to make the assumption that that student then rides the bus to school before it's dealt with. Is that how, I mean, is it handled then at school? I mean, if we don't have someone on the bus, we can't kick them off the bus if only kids know they're not supposed to be on the bus.
Right, that wouldn't be how it is. When we found that, that was added to the investigation. There would be chains of communication and expectations around that with a couple checkpoints. So that was added to the formal investigation.
Thank you. And certainly, we have a piece for follow-up. I will consider all these as points of follow-up. So if you have any other pieces, we certainly have that in the agenda, or you can still state them now, but otherwise, we'd plan on following up in that manner. Then I'll continue. So again, COVID numbers looking good, we're eager to get that. I will keep a listen for any rumor or speculation around the federal mandate for face requirements around buses. That does impact our daily routes as well as any kind of field trips. I think a big question is, will there be school tomorrow? So if any students are watching, I hear that, you know, putting a spoon under your pillow, sleeping with your pajamas on backwards, teachers were writing in today, elementary, it was, you know, any kind of snow globe, shake it up when you see it, or a white crayon, those are some good ones. So for families out there, we make that call as soon as we can. We've been in webinars from our National Weather Service. They do specific calls for weather decision makers. So we're on with snowplow drivers, city municipal workers, as well as schools, looking at those pieces. So certainly, you know, if it's cold, we're tripping into sustained wind chills. Tomorrow's concern is ice, hazardous icing conditions. So we're monitoring that. We go into a call this evening as an area. We're set up in weather region zones to determine the impact. And we certainly make those calls as soon as we can. If we can make a call this evening, just to give families that notice, we will. If we cannot, expect us to make a call right around that 5:30 mark in the morning, we'll get all those postings up, you'll get some automated calls. And while we apologize for that early morning hour, we do have kids getting on buses as early as 6:00 a.m., so it is necessary, we have staff getting on the road. And again, really, it's working with our bus company and making sure that our streets are safe, transport's safe. We also have teen drivers on the roads, you know, driving themselves to high school and 1,000 employees. So we're just looking at that with that in mind. Certainly, we have programs at our schools that are set up for if we're closed, they remain open. So we'll provide notice of that, too. So just since it may be imminent around a decision, just letting everyone know that process. This week, I had the pleasure of hosting Education Day with Leadership West Bend Chamber of Commerce. This is an annual group. It was about 25 people who did as part of their group, ongoing group, and they get a certificate at the end of participation. Area leaders from various companies meet. They had a day of education. They started with early learning 4K. They spent the middle of their day with us at the high school. So thank you to Aaron Dove, Paul Fisher, and Nancy Justman, who represented the board. We gave a shared presentation, fielded questions, and then our students led us on a tour of the high school. We looked at the intersection of their businesses, youth apprenticeships, jab shadowing, all those opportunities. And then the nifty nibble students served lunch that was catered by them and spoke to the catering menu and the process and their culinary skills. So it was a really great day. I had the opportunity to watch Shrek the Musical this weekend. It was a phenomenal performance. Having come just last year, when I started, it was my first musical in West Bend. It was an amazing cast, amazing crew, and just a beautiful performance space. So just certainly happy to have that. So congratulations to everyone involved. That is a lot of time and talent. We also had an orchestra concert, so with musical going on in the auditorium, the orchestra didn't miss a beat. They had a Saturday afternoon fieldhouse concert, and they presented Phantom of the Opera and Tchaikovsky's 1812 Overture to an amazing crowd. So thank you to those performers. Additional upcoming events, the ACT for all juniors will be on March 8th. So they've got some different schedules to accommodate that testing. Our seniors are getting ready for scholarship interviews the week of March 14th. And March 24th, right before spring break, we have a rocking jazz fest featuring bands from all grade levels in the auditorium at 6:30. So make sure you're checking out various Facebook pages. We certainly try and grab from schools the different upcoming events and get them on our district page because our community is always welcome to cheer on for our kids. One of the things that we've been waiting for, for it feels like since I was hired, was bringing forward our community conversations around continuous improvement. We've cleared cold, flu, COVID season and feel confident in bringing together our community for those conversations. We've talked about and sketched out a plan where roughly two-hour sessions where it's direct engagement. I know it's frustrating sometimes for board members as well as our citizens to have to formally address the board, you can't really engage. Community conversations would be more of a structured event where they can go round robin, learn about finance, facilities, curriculum, all those pieces, and have small group conversations with board members, staff members, and then contribute their ideas as they will help us and have small group conversations with board members, staff members, and then contribute their ideas as they will help us form that next iteration of our continuous improvement plan. So look for those. We'll probably host a couple sessions, including a Saturday session and evening sessions, just to make sure and accommodate our families and community members. Athletics, I echo the congratulations to our East and West dance teams. Thank you to all of our athletes, not just them who represented West Bend. It was a very big weekend this weekend. We had state diving. Jan Lancer of East took second at the state competition. Austin Barkaw of West took ninth, and Ryan Meyer of East took 13th. So that was held this weekend. Also, to determine who is going on to state in wrestling, Casey Gish from East and Connor Mira Sola, Cole Mira Sola, Ben Bast, Ethan Bast, and Carter Lovey all of West have qualified for state competition for wrestling in Madison, and that's this coming weekend. Our bowling teams, the West bowling team qualified for state competition, which will be early in March. Haley Corbale, West, qualified for individual state for girls bowling. Jacob Becker, Josh Renner, both of West, qualified for individual state competition. Our East bowling team qualified for state competition, all of which will be held in early March. And Haley Kohler of East qualified for individual state competition. So certainly, a lot of talented bowlers around. Co-op snowboarding was also this past weekend. The boys team took second at the state competition. The girls took fourth. Brianna Schaub, East, took first place in border cross. Johnny Modell, West, took third place overall at that state competition. And I hope safely on their way home now. Our co-op ski teams, both boys and girls, competed in lacrosse this weekend. They were finishing. We got word that competition spanned the entire weekend. They were just finishing today. Our girls team took second at the state competition, and the boys took 12th. So again, just a thank you to all of our athletes, our performers, whether you were in the orchestra this weekend, the musical. Just thank you to them for representing West Bend and letting us take part in cheering you on and watching your amazing talents. I have no other items.
Any other questions, comments for the superintendent? All right, thank you for your report. Our next report, we have school reports for Decorah and Silverbrook. Dr. Jill Reese, I believe, is going to walk us through that. Good evening.
Good evening. We're so happy to start our K-8 school reports. And so tonight, we start with two schools, and basically, the reports go through the district continuous improvement framework and highlight items from that. And so we're going to start with Adrian Snyder from Decorah, and then the second school will be Lance Rell and Heather Gelnitch from Silverbrook. Welcome.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm excited to be able to present about Decorah and the great things that are going on at our school. So as Dr. Reese just shared, we'll be talking, oh, sorry, I didn't expect that to go so fast. So our pyramid talks about the student learning, engagement, customer satisfaction, safe and secure, and efficient. So I'll be just highlighting a little, few things that we've got going on at Decorah in each of those categories. So one of the areas under student learning, certainly a large piece of our pyramid, is focused on math and reading achievement. And so each year at Decorah, we have the STAR testing, which I know Tina's going to be presenting on later. So in the winter, we had some really nice growth of our students. And what I've got highlighted under the math achievement and STAR achievement in parentheses is our proficiency. So those are students who were achieving at that Level 3 and 4, which we consider to be where we want them to be for this point in the school year or back in, towards the end of January. So one of the areas that we look at as well is the student growth percentile. So we look at the proficiency, but we also look at how these students grew compared to other peers at their same score from the fall. So we're really pleased with the growth of our students from actually, within literacy, more than, about 66% of our students met their growth goal, which means that they grew at or above other students who had the same score as them in the fall. So they're really making some really nice growth from where they started in the fall to where they went into January. So we are continuing to work through what that looks like in the classroom, how to utilize that data, to make sure that we are really honing in on which each of those skills are that the students need to continue to grow in. So I don't have a math achievement SMART goal listed. It's not because we're not looking at math achievement at all. In fact, we do very routinely, as we're looking at our pre-assessments for our students, how they do prior to a unit, and then how they're doing post-assessment to see what their growth was. We feel really good with our bridges that we are teaching, really confident in the instruction with that and the learning around for our students and the differentiation within. So what the kids are doing when they're working with each other in their math workplaces, which is the application of the learning. With our literacy achievement, we really wanted to focus on writing this year at Decorah, and that was actually brought forward by the teachers through what we call an e-sale assessment. So it's something that they do as a self-assessment to identify what areas of our PCL framework are we feeling secure in, and what are some areas that we think we can strengthen. And so writing about reading was an area that the teachers last spring had really identified that we needed to strengthen. So that's really been where our focus has been this year, and I'm really excited to talk a little bit more about that. One of the things, there's so much within our literacy framework, but one of them that we do is called a thoughtful log or a writer's journal. So when our children are reading, we want them to really be able to think about what they're reading and be able to reflect on that. So for example, in 4th grade, we want our readers to really be thinking about what the author's message is. So why did the author write this book? And why do I need to know that as a reader? Because it really helps further their comprehension. And so then they're reflecting on that in their thoughtful log, which allows the teacher to be able to review that with the child, set some goals, maybe pick some different books that are going to be along that same messaging for the students so that they can further understand those different genres or author's message, whatever it might be. So timing-wise, I'm probably going to be like 1% of people out there, except for parents, who hope we don't have a snow day tomorrow, because we have our e-sale walkthrough tomorrow, which is myself, hopefully Dr. Reese will make it, Heidi Spangola, my literacy specialist, another one of my reading interventionists, to go through classrooms and really be able to take stock of all the things that are happening in our classrooms in all 17 of them at Decorah and be able to reflect out on that. So, I mean, if I have any, say, Miss Wimmer, please have school tomorrow. My, sorry, kids, my own children included, I'm sure, are watching. Thanks, Mom. So, and then our forward exam, that's last year, so our current 4th graders will be taking the assessment here in the next month or two. But that shows their proficiency from last year with a forward exam, their first time at it. So as we get moving. Going, moving into engagement and customer satisfaction, we, from the engagement survey data from spring of 2021, we had a really great response rate from certified staff, and then our peer professional staff was also strong. An area of strength for Decorah was that the direct supervisor's statements are aligned with his or her actions. And then an area of focus would be to provide opportunity, or an opportunity to provide input into workplace decisions. So one of the things that we, an activity we engaged in in the fall, right when we were coming back to school, is to really get everybody's thoughts about what are all the decisions that are made at school? Like everything from professional development to aid schedules, to recess rules, to instructional schedules, like everything. We just kind of just, you know, had the popcorn ideas of everything, and then we categorized those for who makes that decision. Some of them, it was like, well, I'd really like to, but that's not really my decision. That's yours or Superintendent Wimmer's, whatever. And then we categorized that to say, who needs to be a part of this decision, and is it a shared decision? Is it a command decision? So there's a little bit better understanding of when decisions need to be made, who is a part of that, and how does that get done? Just so that people understand a little bit better about that delineation. And again, timing-wise, we're right in the throes of the engagement survey right now. That closes this week for our staff. So we're looking forward to, you know, seeing how we've made improvement to those things that we've been working on more explicitly. Safe and secure data. So I was asked to share some of our majors and minors at Decorah. So one of the things that we've done over the last couple of years in the district is really tried to identify what are the areas of where we're seeing behaviors in our students, and how do we categorize that so that it's something that can be actionable by our school staff? So when we look at our, this was as of, I think, last week, would that be Wednesday, when I had to have this data? And we've had 51 major behaviors identified at Decorah and 92 minor behaviors. So that results in about 93% of our students only having zero or one referrals this year. So a lot of these behaviors are captured by a number of students. So we might have, you know, 15 students represented, well, there'd be more than that. But we might have 25 students with those 51 major behaviors. So we're looking to really, we have a Tier 2 team that really works on that, identifies behavior plans that need to go into place, additional recess supervision. Our top incident is minor physical contact. So what does that mean at elementary school? It means rough play. It means five-year-old little boys who are learning how to play outside at recess, who are playing some of the top games right now. Kids, maybe not five-year-olds, but they're playing something called Among Us, which apparently is a video game or cartoon or something. And I've got another group of kids who are playing family, and that involves having dogs and cats and crawling on each other, and then they're falling, and then somebody's getting hurt, and then, so it's, it's not necessarily intentional hurtful, I'm angry with you, I'm going to hurt you behavior. It's, we are not interacting the way that we should, and so, and somebody may, as a result, be getting hurt from that. Or it's being noticed by a staff member that looks like, whoa, what's happening? And then when we go to investigate, that was me last week, you're playing what? And who's doing what? Who? Can we figure out a different way to play this game? So really trying to identify what that looks like out on the playground, because that's the primary placement of the minor physical contact, of course. So we do have our PBIS teams as well as our student services team, which is made up of myself, my counselor, my psychologist, and my school liaison that are really looking at that data on a weekly basis, identifying who the students are that really need additional support, and then how we can do that. The pie graph that I have there is, we did a connection survey. So it's really important that you heard me talk about this a little bit at that, one of the last meetings just not that long ago. And we really want to make sure our students feel that they belong at Decorah, that they feel like there are people there that they can go to if they are struggling, if they need somebody to talk to, or who just care about them, who know who they are. So we did a connection survey with the students and had them identify who are the staff members that you feel connected to. So you can see that 95% of our students, and I should note, this is second, third, and fourth graders that we did this with, identified at least four staff members whom they felt connected to. And for the students who had fewer than that, we made sure to connect with those students individually to say, tell us more about what this looks like for you, and do you feel like there would need to be an adult for you to be connected with on a more regular basis? And then after that, then we set up a formal mentorship, which was contacting with a parent to say, you know, what do you think about this? Do you think it could be helpful for your child? So we have about 15 students that are in that right now. It's having, you know, maybe a weekly lunch or a bi-weekly just chat, notes in lockers, things like that, to just help that child feel a little bit more connected at school. It's something we had done a few years ago, and we stopped doing because of COVID. We were trying not to cross cohort. And so now we've been able to do a little bit more with that to help, help our kiddos feel a little more connected. So we are hoping to repeat this survey in the spring to see if that number has even increased from 95%, which we were happy with to begin with, but we would love to see 100% there. And then last, under effective and efficient, it's just an logo there, because I was unsure of how to put information in there about this, because it's so much. So one of the really great things that we have available to us at Decorah this year is through the AmeriCorps program, and it's called Reading Core. So it's bringing in trained tutors who have been vetted through the AmeriCorps program to work with our students individually on their reading development. So what we do is first go through our MTSS process, so identify students who need reading or math intervention. And then for students who maybe do not meet our criteria for reading intervention but are still kind of struggling learners, the Reading Core volunteers, tutors, they do a screener with those kids to see if they meet the criteria for them. So right now, we have two tutors. We have Carla and Andreas. They are, we've served 35 students so far this year, kindergarten through 3rd grade. They are seeing the kids 20 minutes, five days a week. It's a one-on-one setting. So as of just last week, 50% of the students have, are currently above their targeted growth. So they're really seeing some really nice things from that. Jess Kraining, I got to give a shout out to her. She's working her tail off. She's a 1st grade teacher at Decorah. She is helping to support that program at Decorah and just doing a fabulous job with it. So we are hoping to continue that program that was brought to us from Laura Jackson, who had reached out to see the AmeriCorps. They're starting to get into the southeastern Wisconsin region, and so we are excited to kind of jump on. And, you know, the more kids we can reach, we'd love to do it. Our resources are not unlimited. And so it's just great having Carla and Andreas with us to be able to support kids. And then last is just a couple of photos that we have. So the two adults that you see are Carla and Andreas, working with a couple of kiddos that they support. Kids just, they really enjoy going to these adults. They're just super positive people, and it's just wonderful to have them as part of our school community. And then the other three pictures highlight that writing practice that I was talking about with thoughtful logs. So this is in a 1st grade classroom. What you see in the picture is an anchor chart, and that is just ideas that kids are talking about. Like, what can I do in a thoughtful log? I can do an aha moment. I can do an LOL moment. Hopefully, she's still on there. So they can just have different ideas, ways to interact within their thoughtful log. And then in the picture with the screen, that is Mrs. Hebering, a 1st grade teacher, giving the students a prompt for how they can connect with the character of a story that they've read, and the character felt this way, and I felt this way when I, and then connected to them personally. So really making sure, and these are 1st graders, right? So like, how big are their stories? But you'd be surprised. They had some pretty cool things going on. And then, of course, a picture of one of our little eagles writing in her thoughtful log when she was looking at her Lily in the plastic purse. That is all I have for Decorah. Are there any questions for me about what I shared tonight?
Of course. Couple of questions. So the, going back to the safe and secure slide, you don't have to go back, but that's the one I'm referencing. So 95% of all students at Decorah identified at least four staff members who they feel connected to. So was this some type of, like, paper test? I mean, or was it on a computer? Like, talk to us about how it happened.
It was a Google form, and we had pictures on there for them to choose from.
So obviously, we've got 5% of the students, as you pointed out, that, you know, we're going to do some additional intervention. Is this the first time you've done this?
With this group of students, our 4th graders have done it before. They would have done it, because we did it COVID years, so they would have been in 2nd grade, but the 2nd, 3rd graders have not done it, this particular group of kids.
So I'm assuming, because I'm sure you have great plans. So I'm assuming that if, let's say that out of the next time you run this test, 3% still are saying, yeah, I don't connect to anybody. What do you do with those 4th graders that are about to move on to Silverbrook? How does Silverbrook know that these kids have problems and needs additional support or whatever? How are we kind of seeing them through the process?
Yeah, great question. So actually, every spring, our counselors meet with the counselors over at Silverbrook, and they go through just that. Like, these kiddos are kiddos who are really going to be able to connect with, I think, I'm not sure if they still have the two-team house, but in the past, they've had, yes, they've had their smaller houses that we've thought some kids would really benefit from being a part of, just with that smaller setting. So those are conversations that the counselors have each spring with the individual schools. And to be fair, some of these kids, like, there was one student, I love him dearly, but he only listed me. And I was like, feeling really good about that. And I went to him and I said, hey, Bud, like, I noticed you only put my name on there. I feel really good about that. He's like, oh, I thought it was because you're the principal. And I was like, well, okay, that works for me, but do you feel, he's like, I'm good. I don't need to talk. I'm good. And he's a completely, like, nobody would think he'd be a kid that didn't feel connected at school. So some of them, you know, we think maybe just didn't understand the directions, maybe, but we'll do it again this spring.
Maybe only he could spell your name, or he wasn't sure, you know?
No, my name was printed there, so it was on there. Yeah.
Can you kind of describe for me the importance of a student being, feeling connected at school to the staff?
Yeah, so we, I mean, I love being a part of a small school. We have 363 kids. And I, you know, I've been at Decorah now for, this is my 7th year. And so one of the things that I really cherish is knowing everybody and being able to say hi to every kid by name every single morning. And I, you know, when I notice a kid is off, I'm like, hey, what's going on? I might need to check in, or I might ask my counselor to check in. So we want to make sure that we're those kiddos that just are struggling and they just seem different than they have before, that somebody is continually checking in on them, because we want them to feel that they belong, that they have somebody to go to, really to be able to get ahead of if there's bullying happening, or if there's something happening at home, or even just sometimes, you know, we all do it. We go through little funks in life, and we're just feeling kind of out of sorts. And somebody to check in and notice just makes a, makes a big difference.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Honey, are you back on? Can you hear?
Yes, sorry, I had to take my ear... Everyone else has left the call.
Shut up again, all right.
She's hitting the wrong button.
Why don't we text, text her to make sure she's back? All right. All right.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, thanks for having us. We're pleased to be here, and we're going to talk about the good things going on at Silverbrook. So like Adrian talked about and Dr. Reese talked about, we continue to operate with a continuous improvement pyramid, and we'll talk about all aspects of that in our presentation. So of course, we are tracking and have goals for our math and literacy achievement at Silverbrook. We use the Wisconsin Forward Exam, we use the STAR exam as well, and we're tracking data from this fall, winter. And then we have a goal set for spring, so the blue line is our goal line. And we have some different pieces that we are using in math and in reading to affect that progress and to make sure we're increasing the number of kids who are advanced and proficient at our school. So in math, we are doing some intentional warm-ups in math class, which we're seeing some nice results with that. We're also doing small group reteaching. So for years, we've done small group reteaching in reading class. Now we're enacting that in math class, too. So we're fortunate enough to have more time in math class at Silverbrook. So teachers have the opportunity to pull small groups when they see deficits and gaps, and they can work on those skills with their kids. In literacy class, we continue to implement conferring as a strategy. So my literacy teachers meet with their students at least every other week, talk about reading goals, talk about progress that they're making towards, towards their goals. We've also started doing running records for kids, which we hadn't done before. So we've got teachers who are assessing kids using a standard benchmark. And then they're able to do that systematically and periodically throughout the year to make sure that kids are making progress there as well. And like Adrian talked about, we also have a focus on writing. We're aligning our rubrics to the Wisconsin Forward Exam to make sure we're speaking, speaking the same language in terms of writing. And then recently, we've developed a profile of a writer, a fifth and sixth-grade writer, using our priority standards for the district, and then really defining those for the teachers so that across grade levels and content areas, they understand what a writer would be in fifth and sixth grade. Engagement, customer satisfaction, like Adrian said, we are also wrapping up our engagement surveying for this year. We based our action steps on last year's engagement survey, and we had three areas that really stood out as areas to focus on. So the first one was, I'm able to give input into decisions made at Silverbrook. Second one was, we have a culture of recognition at Silverbrook. And then the third was, I'm able to communicate with my supervisor at Silverbrook. So one of the things we did was enact focused walkthrough, sorry, was rounding meetings with our staff. So with our teaching staff in fall, we met with them and talked about these things, asked the question, and then asked what we could do better in those areas. And one of the things that came out of that was focused walkthroughs. So what we did was create a chart that has all of the different growth areas and areas of focus for teachers on it. Excuse me. A little dry, a little bit. Yeah, I do, actually, thank you.
While you're grabbing that, I just want to, for those who don't understand what rounding is or how it's used, you referenced meeting with staff. But that's actually where the administrative team meets individually with staff members to ask questions around what's, what's going well, what, what ideas do they have, and share input so that our leaders of each school can kind of gather those themes and celebrate strengths, and then find area, key areas for them as a school to work on. So those are kind of individually structured.
So then, like Jen said, so now when we're going through and doing walkthroughs and meeting with teachers, we're able to speak to the areas that they're really looking to grow in and provide feedback on that. Instead of just giving a generalized walkthrough, it's really specific to their own areas of growth. So that's been a really positive piece as well. Safe and secure. So similar to what Adrian talked about, we have about 83% of our students who have zero to one office discipline referrals this year. 8.8% of our kids have two to five, and we have 7.8% who have six plus. So our structure at Silverbrook is we have a Student Services Team that meets every week, and we look at referral data from the last 30 days. Kids who have earned three or more ODRs. We look at the interventions that we have in place for them, make sure that, that they are in place. And if they aren't, we develop interventions for them, and then monitor them at those meetings. I also have an MTSS team that meets, multi-tiered system of support team, that meets every other week. So that's counselors, that's intervention, that's administration. And we look at the whole picture of kids. So we might have students who are being served an intervention, who are picking up a number of referrals as well. So we can compare notes and make sure that their needs are being met in a multitude of ways, and that they're having that contact with the adults in the building. And then there's a link to that safety plan as well. Had a committee after last year in some of the COVID things that came up. Talked about developing more strategies for classroom-managed behaviors. So we had a group that met a couple of times over the summer to develop a menu of those things. And then we worked with staff, taught those back in August, and we've continued to revisit those with staff as well. And we're also refining our Tier Two practices, so that's counseling and admin, and working on tweaking how we deliver services and how we identify students for those services also. So that's another thing we continue to work on, is that Tier Two piece. Recently, we completed nonviolent crisis intervention training for the whole staff. That was an action step that we had, and that was done in January to, again, talk about those de-escalation strategies and things that we can do, you know, with students early, you know, before, you know, they pick up a multitude of ODRs. Is really the, the goal there. Effective and efficient.
Sorry, can you, for the benefit of us and the people watching, describe what an ODR is? And then can you also please describe the difference between a major and a minor, and what that looks like at your school?
Sure. So an ODR is an office discipline referral. So a write-up that either administration or a teacher might do regarding a behavior. A difference between a major and a minor. A minor behavior might be talking too much in class, it might be not following directions. It's basically classroom-handled behaviors. Majors are things that really rise to administration. So they might involve student safety, they might involve blatant disrespect, things like that. Those are things that Heather and I see in the office. So minors, classroom handled, majors, office handled. Is that...
Yeah, I'll have more questions at the end, but go ahead.
Okay, sure. Effective and efficient, in that area, our focus really was on our professional learning communities that we have around the building. So that's our subject area groups, that's our science, social studies, that's our Spanish, that's our language arts, math, and just focusing around the four questions of a professional learning community. So what do we want students to know and do? How will we know when they've learned it? What will we do if they don't? And what will we do if they demonstrate mastery sooner? So re-grounded ourselves on that so that our meetings are really focused on, on aspects of those four questions as we go. EduClima training, so EduClima is the tool that we use to monitor student learning and behavior in the district. And we did some training with a group over the summer, and then we did a training with the whole staff to be able to access that resource effectively. And then we're rolling up standards-based grading and reporting in fifth grade. We're doing that this year with fifth grade and Ks, or our specials classes, with the goal to do that in sixth grade next year. So, and just kind of continuing that standards-based grading and reporting process from elementary school, so from fourth grade to fifth grade, then the sixth grade next year. And then some areas to highlight. We were really happy to be back at Biz Town this year. So we have kids that travel down to Menominee Falls. All of our kids travel down with their houses, working at Coles, working at Chase for a day. So there, a lot of preparation that goes into that, credit to the fifth-grade team. We've got our Key Club, they were singing outside of Fleet Farm right before Christmas. We've got a return to concerts at Silverbrook, so that's our orchestra, getting warmed up before one of their first concerts. A noetic math contest, we have all of our winners and kids we recognized, picking up their hardware and showing that off. And then we returned to camp this year out at Camp Silverbrook with our fifth and sixth graders. Talk about connections and making sure that the kids have adults that they're connected to, and that's one of the ways that we've done that for many years, except for the COVID year. So, thank you. And you have any questions?
Right, Nancy?
So let's go back to the slide with the pie chart, please. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right. So 83% of our kids have had zero.
Zero or one?
But we have, 7.8% of our population has had six or more, correct?
That's right.
So at what point do you, yourself, get involved? Not just the team, but when is the time that we have a Come to Lance meeting or a Come to Mr. Rell meeting?
I, I have quite a few of those Come to, Come to Lance meetings. Those are the kids that, that I am seeing quite a bit. So we, we sit down, we develop plans for them. Might involve check-in, check-out, might involve a monitoring sheet. However, depending on the incident, if it's a major, it is, at that point, it's either a Mr. Rell or Mrs. Gelnic conversation with all of those majors.
And how many times do, do we have students come in with the same major before we have to move to something else? And at what point are we contacting parents or guardians or whatever's happening at home?
Yep. So with minors, we ask that, you know, teaching staff, if they're having an issue in the classroom, they'll reach out. For majors, we are contacting families with those.
On first offense?
For a major, yes.
And what if the child continues to do the same major over and over again?
So we have something called a Student Success Team meeting. So if we've got a student who's repeating behavior, we pull the team together and look at the plans that are in place, and then either make tweaks to it or develop a new plan for that student.
So obviously, I'm going to keep hammering. So what do we do when we've established that we don't have a plan and we can't make this work?
Yep. Then we look at other resources that we have available, right? So if it's, if it's a student who's already receiving services, I might involve pupil services. And that, and Emily and her team have been ultra-supportive, fantastic. And we've met more, more this year than we have in previous years, to be honest with you. We've, we've had those conversations for students who aren't already receiving additional support. Then we look at potential ways to, to provide that.
I think, I think, correct me if I'm wrong. So we're wired to talk about how we're going to disrupt the behavior long-term, but in the short term, there's consequences for behavior. I think what they're specifically asking around is detention, in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and we have interaction with a, a resource officer. So all of those consequences occur from the main office, from either Heather or Lance in that. And that's kind of the range of those consequences, and they, they certainly do happen.
I'm sorry, all of those things aren't, yeah, I didn't realize you're, all of those things are in play. As we talk about often, we've had more contact with pupil services than we've had in years. Officer Donath, you know, in Silverbrook, we have had several conversations about different situations, in-school suspension, out of school, you know, unfortunately, loss of privilege. We have all those things going on, they're all in play.
Well, and as a school board member, understand, you know, it's easy to say what you would or wouldn't do. But it's our main job to keep kids in school, especially kids who need it. So I'm, I'm not suggesting that, yay, I love to kick someone out of school. But at some point in time, when behavior can't be disrupted, there has to be some consequences. And, you know, it, believe you and me, this isn't the only group that got this little lecture from Nancy. The last group did too, who was here. So, you know, I'm the one who asks for the behavior conversations, because I have concerns. I have students in this district, my neighbors have students in this district. I don't sit here for the fun of it. I sit here because I care about students, because this is not really the most fun job lately. So I, I really have great concerns that we're not disrupting some of this behavior. And at what point, then, do we have to start making some examples out of students for bad behavior? And I hate to use that word, because it sounds so, you know, non-caring. But maybe there's other environments for students who've been in your office seven or eight times for the same thing. I know that we have different programs that we utilize here at the district office, where we really disrupt their behavior and, and basically, you know, they get a lunch date with Ms. Wimmer, and they get to do their studies elsewhere. So, you know, I would hope that we're looking at that. I understand not all of that information is public, and it's not all coming here. But, you know, to assume that the school board doesn't care about behavior couldn't be further from the truth. The school board cares a great deal about behavior, or we wouldn't ask for the information. So, you know, although we can't discuss individual students, and we can't discuss every single case that comes forward, you know, I want people at home to know that we all care very much about behavior, and that we care what's going on at Silverbrook, but more importantly, we care about each student. So if that student needs extra help, and to disrupt their behavior means to bring them out of Silverbrook, we 100% support that, as long as they're still getting the education opportunity that they deserve.
And I appreciate that, and I agree with you, and, and I'm kind of in the same position. You know, my kids are in the district, and my perspective has always been that the kids at Silverbrook are, are my kids. And it, you know, you can make group decisions and make generalizations, but we try and look at each individual student and what they need, and get them what they need. And I appreciate that.
And my last comment will be, I'm not kidding about the bus thing. I'd like to see you both on buses for a while until we can get this under control. And I know it's a super fun ride, because I've done it myself. So we'll expect to hear back about that.
I love the bus. I do. Yeah, it's good times.
Talk to me about grading for learning. I remember talking about that a few years ago. So right now, is it just fifth-grade key classes? And then with the hopes of expanding to all fifth next year?
It's all of fifth right now and key classes. Yep, for just fifth graders.
Okay. Do we have grading for learning at Badger?
Not yet. So the idea is, is a slow roll up, you know? So the, the idea was that familiarity. So K through four, you know, parents and students are used to, you know, that, that standards-based reporting. And the thought was, really the focus with standards-based is on the learning and, and the feedback. And we find, what fifth-grade staff has found, that by focusing on those standards and not putting a grade on it, like, right away, it promotes that increased feedback and really keeps that feedback loop open so that, you know, sometimes, you know, when, when you put that grade on it, the learning stops. You know, the student's done, and they put it aside. And we feel like, you know, learning is a continual process, and there's always room to improve and, and get better. And that want to, you know, to get better is really important.
I think one of the things that I hear sometimes, sorry, I'm hijacking a little. But speak to, sometimes when they're coming out of elementary, right? Not just the, the grading practices and understanding what a grade means, and that they, they know or don't know. Because sometimes you can get a letter grade, and for, for families, for parents, you want it to be meaningful. What does my, what does my child know? And what are they going to learn next? And what do I need to do at home to help them? But can you speak to, I hear this rumor a lot, so if you could speak to this, that kids at Silverbrook don't have any homework at all. And, and I hear that, and people are like, hey, what's going on? Are we, are we lowering something? Are we doing something? These kids don't seem to have homework. I'm like, well, if they're parents in school, I would say, contact your teacher, have a conversation. Maybe your child is, you know, advancing through something or, or doing something. But can you just speak to that homework is alive and well at Silverbrook?
It's, it's there. It's still alive and well. Teachers still assign homework, and kids still do it, and some kids don't still. But there is homework.
I could, I could speak to that. I've got a sixth grader at Silverbrook, and she's doing homework almost every night of the week. So she loves school, so she does her homework. But, yeah, it's definitely alive. Well, as far as the standards-based grading, I've got another kid who's about ready to go to the high school. And so as you talk about... go to the high school, and so as you talk about what math class should he be in next year as a freshman, well, he's gotten all As or Bs, so he must be good at math. Well, how good does he, how good is he at math? And is he at that mastery level where he's going to be able to go through advanced math in high school when it is on a transcript? Or did he just kind of get by and get some As and Bs? So I've been a fan of it, having my kids in the grades that they're in, to really understand where they're at in that subject. And obviously, you know, have conversations with teachers along the way of how does that translate into the grade at the end of the semester? And my wife and I feel like we've got a handle on that now, too, which is nice, but I've been a fan of it through Silverbrook and watching my kids go through it.
Any other questions?
Okay, one more.
Nancy?
So I was a fan of Adrian's survey that she did with the K through fours, you know, asking them, who do you, you know, associate with or who do you feel close to or whatever you'd like to call it, who can you connect with? Do we do that at Silverbrook? If not, have we considered doing it at Silverbrook? Because clearly, this is one of the comments I made the last time, I don't think we have a large amount of behavioral issues in the K through four. I think we're still learning how to be friends and I understand what Adrian was saying about rough play, whatever. I think the wheels start to fall off the, you know, magical bus, fifth through eighth. And then if we don't catch it by ninth, well, we probably lost the battle on that one. So what are we doing to make sure that our kids, who you think, you know, you know who's coming in, you've already been told, you know, you need to watch X, Y, and Z, we've got all kinds of issues? How do you continue to ensure that we're doing a lot of follow-up or we're making sure that they connect somehow?
Yep. So we looked at data coming in to this year, for example, and we had created a strategy called a reset process, you know, where it teaches self-regulation in four steps. The goal is for students to be able to run through those steps in ten minutes or less. So we had identified kids from the previous year who had picked up a number of office discipline referrals, who didn't have that connection, so they started the year doing that, and that was about eighteen students, you know, and for those students, it's worked, it's done what it's meant to do. It's not magic, there is no, you know, magic wand, I wish there was, but it's worked for them. As far as surveying, we've done all kinds of surveys over the years with kids, you know. This year, because of the feedback that we talked about on, what to do, on this slide where we developed the focused walkthroughs, feedback was part of that. So that was one of the areas that we wanted to focus on and that the majority of staff wanted to focus on. So the questions that we asked students were related to feedback. You know, I receive feedback that I know what to do with. I receive feedback that helps me learn more. So our student survey was focused on that, we did that back in fall, November, so that's where we went with that. Good question.
I ran into you at a basketball game a few weeks ago, and you've mentioned something about inter murals making their way back into Silverbrook. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. So, one of the things we've talked about for years, that's the upper right-hand picture. So Bob Feldkamp is one of my awesome FIAD teachers, and he came to me, well, a couple years ago, and said, Lance, we should have inter murals at Silverbrook. And the YMCA would, they run our after-school, before and after-school and do a great job, and they would do some inter murals, and our participation just wasn't fantastic, you know, it was what it was. So Bob had some different ideas and wanted to run it in-house, and he felt like if he could make some adjustments, he would do that. So for the first time, we did our own in-house inter murals in fall. We did six weeks of basketball, two days a week for an hour, and we had ninety-eight kids sign up, girls and boys, fifth and sixth grade. And you talk about providing opportunities for kids that maybe haven't had it before, you know, maybe they don't have access to club sports, maybe they don't have access to whatever. And what I mark success by is retention. So I was in there the first day, this is one of the first days when you've got all the kids. I went in there last week on the last day when they were playing three-on-three tournaments against each other, and they were still all there and they were having a great time.
Cool.
So next up is volleyball. We have sixty kids signed up for volleyball, girls and boys, and then we have a running club that'll happen after that. And then next year, we hope to have a full slate, so.
Maybe a dance team, too.
We might need extra coaches for that.
I could find you a few.
Okay, all right.
Volunteer hours. Not you.
Well, and I do have to say.
Talking about high school kids coming to coach.
And as far as that goes, so we have adult coaches, but then we have high school volunteers who do community service hours, so, yeah, it's just great all around.
It's great. Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Yeah, I'm excited about that, too, because what a way for kids to feel connected.
Yep. Well, okay, we could go on, but Tom Hoguster came over, the plan is, he's the Badger Athletic Director, right? So he came over and talked to the kids, gave out little handouts about the sports at Badger so that the sixth graders know what's going on, what to look forward to, kind of what they're preparing for also, so.
All right. Questions?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Takes us on to our next report, which is the Policy Committee Report, and Mr. Ongard.
Yep. Policy Committee met on February eleventh. We went through some more of the six hundred and seven hundred policies. Some of those are, all of them that we've gone through are now in front of the board tonight for either first reading or second reading. When we get to that and the action items tonight, we're not going to take any action on them tonight because Mr. Fisher's not here with us, so we don't have the full board. Technically, we could probably do the second reading and vote, but you can't delete policies on a second reading, and I don't want to delete policies that could be in conflict of nothing that's been approved, if that makes sense. And so we'll go through those here in just a little bit, but we're not going to take action on anything tonight.
Sounds good. Any questions for Joel? All right. Hearing none. We'll move to the next agenda item, and under discussion, we have winter assessment results. And Tina Van Ru is coming forward to guide us through that.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi. So we presented these results to the Curriculum Committee two weeks ago. I know that the principals earlier tonight referenced them in their presentation, but tonight we'll go through the district-wide and grade-level summaries for you. So STAR is our universal screener. We give it to our students in grades K through ten, three times per year, fall, winter, and spring. And this slide shows which grade levels participate in which assessment. So kindergarten and first grade participate in the STAR Early Literacy, which is the pre-reading assessment. In grades two through ten, then the students transition to the reading assessment. And then for math, students in grade one through eighth take STAR Math. This year, for the first time, STAR has additional products that ninth and tenth graders can participate in. So if a student is in an algebra class at the high school, they will actually take a STAR algebra exam, and likewise for geometry, students can take a geometry exam. So comparing last year winter to this year winter, you're going to see on these slides the test participation as well as the percent of students that were proficient. So last year, we had ninety-four percent of our students in grades K and one participate, compared to this year, we had ninety-eight percent, and we had fifty-one percent proficient, and this year we have forty-five. The next slide breaks it down by grade level. So you can look at these grade level slides in two different ways. Straight across the row, you can see how kindergartners last year in winter did compared to kindergartners this year in winter. You can also look at the slides diagonally to see how kindergarten last year did compared to how they did this year as first graders. The next assessment is the STAR reading, again, which is given to students in grades two through ten. Participation increased last year from ninety-two percent to ninety-five percent this year, which is always our target. And the proficiency, the amount of students meeting that benchmark remain the same. Grade by grade, again, you can look at this slide across, looking at the rows, how second grade did compared last year to this year, as well as diagonally to see how they moved as they increased their grade level. The last assessment is the STAR proficiency for math, and that's given in students grades one through eight. Test participation, as well as the percent of students that were proficient or identical last year to this year, so we're seeing a lot of consistency across this test. And then lastly, this is the slide that shows by grade level, and again, how students potentially shifted as they increased their grade level year to year. So overall, the STAR assessment is aligned closely to the Wisconsin Forward State Assessment benchmarks. So we use this assessment in a variety of ways to see, as a predictor, how we might perform on the state assessment. We use it at the grade level to see how students are doing across the multiple schools, and then they also drill into the student level, so teachers can see what skills students are excelling in or still need more work in.
And do we test again in the spring?
We do.
So you can start comparing winter to spring?
Yes. Yep. And then, like Adrian had mentioned in her presentation, STAR also provides growth information, so we'll be able to see how the students met the growth expectation from fall to spring to see how that full year progressed. Any questions?
Let me start. All right. For those who might be looking at this data the first time, can you describe, what does it mean to be proficient? Because, you know, you take a look at these scores and you wonder, you know, all right, what are we shooting for? Can you give us some context as to what does proficient mean?
Yeah. So every time a student takes the assessment, they're given a national percentile rank. So on a range of one to ninety-nine, how are they compared nationally to other people that are taking the same test at that same grade level? Those percentile ranks are then given a benchmark at each grade, and if they meet that benchmark, they're considered in the third or the fourth category. Being proficient would be level three, like Adrian had mentioned, or being advanced would be a level four, and it's all based off of that national percentile rank.
Go ahead, Nancy.
My question's more probably for Ms. Wimmer, so you don't get the hot seat. Obviously, if you're looking at this, there could be some concern because it looks like we've dropped in several areas. I'm sure that you have a plan as to how we're going to fix that or increase that. Let me also state that I certainly do not think this is the only indicator of student success. My own children did horribly on these tests, and I would get the always non-proficient letter in the mail. Happy to say that they all did graduate, thank you, from high school, minus one is still in school. So, I mean, I certainly think there's other levels of their success, and I don't put lock, stock, and barrel in this, but sadly, some people do. So can you give us some more explanation?
So I would invite Laura Jackson and Jill Reese, who are up to the podium, because they might have things to add. Jill oversees K-8 instruction, Laura's focused on 912. We're working on, as you said, looking at multiple benchmarks and pieces of data, making sure there's pieces that are normed in that manner, teacher anecdotal records, and focusing our efforts on instructional strategies that are high leverage, high yield, and again, beyond just kind of a national or formal test like this. You're going to be sitting with your readers around you, doing one-on-one, you know, assessments of their actual reading, those pieces, and creating and formulating plans. So I think when Dr. Reese and Laura put plans together, they're looking at the instructional strategies, the resources that are in the hands of kids. You saw that we just greatly expanded our K-8 literacy resources into our classrooms that teachers can use as planning tools, print-rich environments in there as well, certainly looking at both math and literacy and then those benchmarks. You'll see, the item right after this is an early reading empowerment micro credential for our staff, again, putting those kind of eggs in the basket of ensuring that they have the skills and the resources they need to differentiate for kids and meet their needs. Anything else that Dr. Reese or Laura would like to add to that?
No, I think that that's pretty clear. It's just building up the toolbox for teachers and giving them support so they can continue to grow student goals, grow student outcomes and things like that. And like you said, Nancy, it's not just about that one test, but about multiple data points, and that's the piece, putting resources in their hands, giving them this early reading empowerment course, things like that. We're also looking at potentially doing some things with more digital tools that will give teachers more data and ways to do, look at data in different ways and things like that. So just continuing to grow those resources and support for teachers at the K-8 level.
So Dr. Reese, wait, wait, before you walk away. So for people in the audience or at home who might be saying, wow, what are they doing? I mean, those scores are so low. Help us to say, like I said, I don't believe that this is necessarily indicative of how someone's going to do in the future or any of these things. I mean, this is really a small percentage. What would you say the percentage of this test really is overall for students? I mean, you could literally come up as fifteen percent non-proficient and still be an A student, correct? I mean, we have students who probably, I know we have students who do that because I've seen it.
Yeah, and test-taking is one thing, right? Like, some students don't do well on standardized tests, it's just that they don't have the test-taking strategies, that some kids get nervous about test-taking, there's a whole bunch of things that go into it, right? So that's why we are really looking to get multiple data points on things. STAR test is one nationally-normed test, so it gives us kind of a benchmarking level. But as we increase with, like I said, some digital tools, this early reading empowerment course, we will have other courses of data, too, to look at to give us a better picture of that.
At the high school level this year, in mathematics, our students are taking, who are taking algebra class, take the algebra assessment, and our students who are taking geometry as their math class are taking the geometry assessment. Previously, they had a general math assessment that was given. So the algebra teacher would have results that didn't necessarily apply to their content area, and now they can drill deeper into that specific content area. Same thing with the geometry. The high school this year in August launched the school year in collaboration, the staff were all working together around the ACT assessment and understanding how their content area supports and grows some of the skills, behaviors, vocabulary, and strategies for the ACT test. And so all high school teachers had that opportunity to really look at questions specifically that have been on past ACTs and then look at how they develop that student vocabulary as well as those, some of that background information that's utilized on that. And so they've been continuing to collaborate on that throughout the year. That, along with their work on their standards alignment, has, will help focus the work that the students are doing, but also tie directly back to those results.
In addition to making data meaningful for instruction at the classroom level, we increased our interventionists that are available at our schools, knowing that we were returning to in-person learning, looking for opportunities to accelerate learning in case there was any learning loss, et cetera. So we're fully staffed, and Lenny can speak to it during, I think he's highlighting staffing plans and priorities, and will speak a little bit to those interventionist role. And we used some of our previous dollars, I know we're talking about revenues, that were allocated to our district to bulk up those interventions and make sure that we were providing supports at school for students who needed them.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. All right. Next for discussion, early reading empowerment micro credential. I believe this is perhaps going to be a team presentation. Mr. Hanson is going to kick us off.
Dr. Reese is going to join us, too. So this was discussed in Curriculum Committee recently, and we're excited to bring it forth for discussion tonight and then possible approval at our future meeting. So as you recall, in 2020, June of 2020, the board took action after much discussion to implement a new certified staff compensation model, which was really focused on recognizing all the different expertise areas that staff can bring to the table. The community, the teaching staff, our committee that investigated that, really felt that it was critical that we value, in terms of compensation, those high levels of expertise. So there's several areas that we already have in place that we recognize in terms of additional licensures and certain programs. of additional licensures and certain programs. But this plan that we're bringing forth tonight is probably one of our biggest efforts to use that model to also get after what Ms. Justman was talking about in terms of how are we going to ensure we're getting true results out of that. So the ERE plan, or Early Reading Empowerment Plan, is a micro-credential opportunity that we would like to provide through the compensation model for certified staff. It is a program that is really homegrown, where our own internal trainers that work here in the district will partner with a partner university, which in this case is Concordia University in Mequon, and serve as adjunct professors to engage our staff participating in this and some pretty intensive training around in-class reading intervention, which is really targeted at the elementary and especially primary elementary levels, but really going to be useful information regardless of the elementary level that they are in. So I kind of went through the purpose here a little bit already, but the summary is we want to target our dollars, our compensation dollars, towards our district, key district goals. And increasing literacy proficiency is at the top of that list. This has been really a joint effort in a really beautiful way between the operations side of, you know, myself from the human resources side, as well as the curriculum instruction side, with Dr. Reese from the elementary education side, and then Heidi Spengola, our literacy coordinator, who also helped really champion this effort. What our plan is, is this is a voluntary but highly incentivized opportunity for staff to participate in, where they would engage in a year-long training plan where they learn the skills of early reading empowerment. Now, early reading empowerment is based in reading recovery, which is a different model you may have heard of, which is several decades old, extremely well-researched, and probably one of the more positively researched intervention strategies in all of education in the last probably 50 years. The impact and positive data that's around it, I have in some future slides, but there are few things in education as well researched this and as, to show as much success as well. So our goal would be to offer this to some targeted staff groups first. We have a limited number of slots that we can make available simply just because of the number of internal trainers we have and the intensiveness of this training. But we're going to focus first, as you see, on our grade-one teachers, as well as if we have additional slots, we'll certainly allow more to apply and participate. But grade one is where this ERE and reading recovery really was born, and it's, most of the research is in those primary grades. Then you can see that we then expand out kindergarten, grade two, and then even beyond, along with special education and grades three and four and beyond. I'm going to let Dr. Reese talk a little bit about what ERE is, what that looks like in a class, and how we're going to kind of adjust it to fit into kind of a classroom teacher model instead of an intervention model.
So as Mr. Hanson said, early reading empowerment is born out of the reading recovery research base. Early reading empowerment itself grew out of UW-Milwaukee and some professors at UW-Milwaukee. And so it's known very well around this area. The superintendent and I in the past have also taken this course and done some work with students in it in the past. So it's near and dear to my heart. I believe that it gives teachers the awareness to know what to do with students. One of the things that you discover as you're in the education business is teachers get a classroom of students, 25 students, let's just say, they all have different reading abilities. And most elementary teachers only have probably three to six credits in teaching literacy. And so they are given this job to teach all students to read. And it's a hefty load, and we have high expectations for them. So this gives them the awareness of what to do when they get that group of students. It helps them acquire the skills on how to deal with these different reading abilities and what students need. And it gives them the practical application, like builds their toolbox with those things that they can do to help those students learn and grow. And so I believe that, just in my practical experience and just knowing the body of research, this will really have an impact on our student learning and our district. And it gives teachers, just the teachers that have gone through this, they feel empowered to do their job because they have the support that they need to do the work that they really truly want to do. Touchy slide, sorry. Lenny, do you want to go through the?
Sure. Just to give you an idea, so reading recovery, kind of the origin of this, was really designed as like a one-on-one type reading intervention. ERE came in to take those same strategies, expand it to more of a small group format. And what we're looking to do is teach those strategies not just to a select group of interventionists, but all of those homeroom classroom teachers so they can use those strategies with all of their students, in their guided reading groups and other, you know, conferring and different opportunities. Some of the data I pulled, you know, the Curriculum Committee was interested in some of that research that I cited, and it's pretty hefty and pretty overwhelmingly positive. I put some of the pieces here that, you know, ERE or reading recovery has been proven to be 3.9 times more likely than the average Title I intervention, that's across the nation. That second bullet point there, about, you know, five months of reading recovery accelerated learning by 1.9 months beyond a normal five months. So you're talking about a 38% acceleration in learning over that period of time. You know, what we're trying to do now is expand that to be integrated into everything the teacher does for the entire year, right? So we would hope to really gain substantial impact there. These are some of the details around how the course is designed. So it's really, it's not action research, but it is practice and action while you're learning it. So the participating staff members have several courses where they participate in learning, and then they go and take that as they're going over to their classroom, and then they implement it as they go. So there's a lot of information here about how to do that. We're really proud to have several people who are not just trained in how to do ERE, but train the trainer kind of model people, where we can utilize their skills, empower them to spread that awareness elsewhere. And as we all know, learning from someone within our organization is going to be far more impactful to making the work applicable to what we do. They can design the course to fit exactly how our literacy framework operates versus taking something in like a survey course that is hard to, you know, personalize for your particular system. We are looking at a $1,500 micro-credential compensation piece that would go, that the teacher would earn, that is annual upon completion of this. That's not our largest, but one of our larger expertise pay amounts. But this is an intensive amount of work for people to participate in, and we feel that the potential impact on students, as well as, you know, that amount of time from the staff is deserving of that compensation. Yep, go ahead.
Regarding the course detail and just regarding some of the components, it's important to note that when the teachers are taking this course, they're actually doing this work with students live. And so part of it is, although they're going through a year-long course, they're already starting to work with students while they're in the course. And part of that is then gathering data during the course to take back to the course instructors and analyze how it's going and make adjustments. There's this thing called behind the glass. It's an old kind of reading recovery strategy, and ERE uses that, where you work with students and you have somebody view you working with students and give you feedback on that. So there's some really good practices in this, but it's actual practical application with students out of the gate, which is really cool.
Ultimately, what we're trying to do here is we have great staff retention of our teachers. We have excellent retention, and we have a lot of really experienced teachers. This is an opportunity to make them even more masterful in what they're doing and really help us impact those literacy performance scores. So bring this for discussion and answering questions today.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Do we have the, what's the capacity? So if every, or first-grade teacher, I'm sorry, is that what we said? If every first-grade teacher wanted to take this, do we have that capacity?
We do have that capacity. We have 18 slots based on the number of trainers that we have, and we have right now 16 or 17 first-grade classes, so we have that ability.
Do you anticipate 50% wanting to take it? You, I mean, obviously, we're hoping 100. I get that. But I mean, what's your anticipation as far as how many?
So again, I think we will fill our slots each time because we'd first kind of open up to our initial group, right? We're going to target a certain grade, but then we'll see who signs up. But then we'll open it up widely to everybody else throughout elementary.
Okay.
Which, when you add up all the grade levels plus the special education teachers, you know, we're pushing 100 staff members.
Right. So I mean, obviously, you're not going to get everyone, but over the course of several years, the idea would be that it would be fabulous to have everyone. I think it's a great program. You know, two of my students went through reading recovery. This is super exciting to me because as much as that program was wonderful, it also kind of pulls them out of the classroom. And then there's that, like, why are you getting pulled out? And, you know, the fact that a teacher can actually do this in a group, and I think this is amazing. So kudos to both of you for bringing it forward. Kudos to Curriculum Committee. I mean, I, if there's teachers listening, I encourage every one of our elementary teachers to take this and to implement it as soon as humanly possible because it is, you know, what it can do for someone who struggles with reading, it will change their life. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't really have a lot to add because Tawny and I saw this in curriculum, and thank you for adding those couple extra things we asked you about. I think we are really excited that our own people are going to be the instructors for this course, and we talked about whether they even wanted to do that. So, and it sounds like they do, they're just as excited, and what a way to grow themselves professionally as well. And just the idea of, you know, we're here to serve all students. And when you have kids in a classroom that are in multiple different reading levels and to try to bring those kids up is really exciting. So, yeah, thank you for working on all this. I'm excited.
And this seems just very well-aligned with the district's goals. And so I think this is, this would be a great training program. We're not taking action tonight, but we'll see this at a future gen-
Most likely at the next meeting, based on the feedback we receive, so.
Great. Other thoughts, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next discussion item, estimate revenues for the 22-23 school year, including federal stimulus dollar use. And Mr. Andy Sarno will walk us through that. Mr. Sarno, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. And before I start in this, this truly is a presentation projecting what next year will look like from a financial perspective. The important part, and I have some items of information, some considerations, because we actually need to back up to this year. So there's two pieces. A year ago, we began using a budget forecast model. So that's put on through Baird. It's probably the most extensive spreadsheet I've ever seen in my life with circular references, and it's very particular. I am updating that, and as you've taken action over the last several months with some of our custodial staff, our aides, those providing instruction to our kiddos, we've been making some market adjustments, some mid-year salary and wage changes. I'm updating a lot of that at this point in time. Why is that important? As we take a look at next year, we're really measuring what's going on this year, rolling that forward between revenues, expenditures, things going up, things going down, we need to make sure that we're as accurate as possible. So I'm updating those numbers. That will lead into a budget amendment that will be brought forward for formal approval. Has to go through a Class I notice after the board takes action. But I want to, I want to make sure that we're aware of some considerations and other information. So I'm updating those salary and benefit changes, working with Lenny Hanson and his team in HR. We can then roll some numbers forward. We're estimating our enrollment for next year. As you know, we're an enrollment-driven revenue organization. We're one of only a few, or the organization that has revenue limits. It's based on a per-dollar amount. It dates back to 1993. Every biennial budget has an increase, or there's been a couple of years where it's either been flat or even a decrease. But that state biennial budget is what drives the dollar amount per student. We're considered a low-spending district, meaning we're at the floor of that revenue limit, right at $10,000. The two prior years, there was a pick-me-up-type dollar amount, a $300 increase that brought us up to that $10,000. This biennial budget, that's this school year as well as next school year, there wasn't an increase in the revenue limit. We received an SER II and an SER III dollar amount. There's still the DPI in the Department of Education at the federal side. They're still determining the final amount of the SER III. But when we take a look at this year, we're utilizing some of the federal dollars, approximately 2.5 million of the SER II, for both program enhancement, COVID-related protocol, as well as balancing the budget. Again, why? Because there's no increase in the revenue limit as a part of this year or next year, the state biennial budget. So I wanted to make sure that that was pointed out. But we are utilizing those dollars to help balance the budget. As we take a look at, and I'll share some of this information, we have a declining enrollment that's been pretty consistent on a three-year average. When we look at two years ago and last year, we saw a fairly large dip. This year, we rebounded a little bit. But when we take a look at about a five-year trend line, we see a pretty consistent amount of declining enrollment. So as that rolls forward, that's going to, again, on a three-year average, impact the revenue limit that we have access to dollars. We have a 4.7% CPI, so Consumer Price Index, as a part of ACT 10. It was, school boards were granted the authority to bargain up to a determined Consumer Price Index amount. In the past, it's been 1.5, 2.25. There's been years where it's been under 1%. This year, it's at 4.7%. We need to take that into consideration. So again, we can bargain up to that amount with any of our units, but it's something that we need to consider. Health insurance has been good. We're a self-funded school district with health insurance, so when times are good, they're good. And we have a burden that when people start to use, have large claims, a lot of claims. We do have reserves. You took action here a couple months ago, last month, to make sure that we have reserves in our equity account and our fund balance. But we're self-funded. What does that trend look like going forward, even though we've seen a couple or several good years now of the premiums collected versus the claims that we've paid for that health insurance? As we take a look then, as I've mentioned, the SER III, so this third pot of money that we had access to, there is $4.1 million that's available. We're not going to be, we're not going to be needing that in the current year that we're in, but what does that look like in utilizing that next year? There is a provision that 20% of that $4.1 million has to be used for enhancing, or for that matter, even remediating learning loss, making sure that we're enhancing programs for the duration of those dollars. We do need to reach out. In fact, in my executive summary, I referenced soliciting input from stakeholders. That's a requirement. We will be doing that. I'd like to, in fact, I was thinking we'd have comment cards tonight. We need to collect that in an electronic format. So very soon here, we're going to start engaging the community, parents. We can work through PTOs and the principals and engaging them to make sure we're soliciting that back, even building leadership teams with principals and how are they're engaging staff, and for that matter, even students. What have we been doing that's been working? What do we need to do to continue to improve? Meeting kids' needs. So we're going to be doing that soon, but we will be needing those dollars again going back. There's not been an increase in the revenue limit this year or next year. We're living on those dollars. That's what we, we're told we would need to do by the legislature. That's what we're going to be doing. I'd like for consideration, I'll work with Superintendent Wimmer on this, but even Nancy Kunkler, we've been working on a Finance 101, calculating those revenue limits, where those numbers come from, where our revenue sources are, the two pieces between the state aid and the property taxes, what that then means with the mill rate of the taxation rate and the history of that. But we're putting our final touches on that, those documents soon. So it's not a bad idea to be able to educate those who haven't had the chance to learn that, but for that matter, since this is some stuff that we only do on an annual basis, making sure that we have an opportunity to remind ourselves in understanding, understanding those different pieces. So again, what I've been able to do in this, I think it's, I think it's my fourth year. I've been here three years in the district now. But what we've been able to do is calculate our revenues and expenditures, what's going on from this year to next year when we look at rolling that forward. I'm still in process of reconciling this with that Baird forecast model, but these are some preliminary numbers that we need to take a look at. When we, let's start out with revenues. We have general fund revenue limit decrease. So again, based on our declining enrollment, right off the bat, we can anticipate about $1.9 million less next year because of declining enrollment. Again, three-year average. Next one, open enrollment revenues. Sounds very minor. I've held our dollars flat over the last several years. Our open enrollment in students have remained fairly consistent. The dollar amount changes every year. It's about one or two years, one or two years ahead. So I've been projecting that we'll see about $11,000 of new money based on about the same number of students from this year to next year. We're utilizing this- number of students from this year to next year. We're utilizing this year, state cares, one-time sources, where those are, those are dollars that we'll be utilizing from the governor's budget. He had special legislature. He called them CFR. I apologize, and I'll do even more digging, but I've not been able to find out what CFR stands for. But those are one-time sources, $830,000. It's already been receded. He made it a point to carve those dollars out. They're in this year's budget. They were not a part of the original October budget. They're one-time dollars, meaning we have them now, but they're not recurring to next year. So we have to take that out of the equation. They're not going to be repeating. We did have the federal one-time sources. This was the original cares, called the SER number one, $258,000. That was a carryover from last year. We're utilizing it this year. That's going to be going away. When I take a look at the federal, other federal dollars, the SER 2, this is where we're utilizing this year about $1.8 million at the second round of stimulus dollars, both for program enhancement, COVID mitigation, as well as budget balancing. But we're utilizing about $1.8 million this year. We're using it this year. It will go away. And then we're going to then replace it with the balance of SER 2. I think that's row number 12, where we're going to be adding in the balance of SER 2, which is approximately $1.3 million. As of right now, the last piece of information, and when we take a look at revenues, is the SER 3. These are one-time dollars. This is our allocation at this point in time. My belief is, is our allocation is going to go up slightly. There's a little chunk of money yet that's to be finalized. I know between the Department of, Department of Education at the federal level, the DPI, and our state government, they're trying to finagle the last piece of that. This is a conservative number. It will go up, but there's approximately just shy of $4.1 million. We can call that new money. I don't know at this point in time, it's even a little bit too early to assume or make estimates. But between our grant, our title, federal money that comes in, I don't have a dollar, but I'm just identifying it as a variable that could change from this year to next year. We'll continue to monitor that. On the expenditure side, so again, that 4.7% CPI that I'd mentioned here a few minutes ago, at about $42.75 million, a 4.7% increase across the board translates to a little over $2 million in raises. There's about 15% benefits between the Wisconsin Retirement, FICA, Life, LTD tied to the $2 million in raises, translates to benefit increases of about $300,000. Our self-funded health insurance, we're estimating at this point in time, a fairly consistent 8% increase moving forward with our health costs. We're on a calendar year basis, so I've estimated about 8% on about $10 million for half of a year, translating into about $394,000 that we need to identify for increases in health insurance. We do have some expenses that are tied to, expenses non-employee related, purchase services that are tied to the CPI, other increases, namely, transportation utilities. So I'm estimating that those increases will be approximately $141,000 for this next year. And again, these are without any changes. There could be health insurance plan changes. There could be routing differences that we could take a look at as cost savings measures. But these are just rolling things forward, because that's going to be important when we take a look at the bottom line. Insurance changes. So this is the workers' comp. This is the liability, those non-employee related insurances. It's a hardening market. I've been told that our cyber insurance will probably double this year, maintaining the same rate of coverage, but estimating a $50,000 increase for insurances. Likewise, we're above, we had about $11,000 of revenues for open enrollment. This next year, I'm estimating that we're going to have about $34,000 of increases in open enrollment costs out. Again, flat membership, an increase in the dollar amount per student that is an expense. Two items that we're still working on, and this, these are, both of these are important because we're taking a look at what's going on this year, moving forward to next year. The first one, I'll go backwards. We have our substitute expenses. So this year, as you might imagine, we have a service that we utilize called Teachers on Call, as well we have involuntary subbing. And that's where we don't have a substitute available. Teacher during the prep period can be compensated. We're making sure that due to the absences, that we cover any, any needed area. But those expenses, are they going to be rolling forward? So that's the first one. The second one, just above it, what I might call hiring changes. So we have over the year, employment where we will have a vacancy due to resignation in a gap in that period of time, making sure then that when we have that next year, that position has been hired, making sure that that rolls forward with the full year's expenditure. As well, we've been making other areas where, again, based on the raises, the market adjustments, just making sure all of that's captured. So again, I'm working with Mr. Hansen and his team to identify both of these and what's going to happen from this year to next year. $2 amounts that we need to make sure we monitor. Couple areas that are just outside, but still impact. So they're outside of the general fund, but they impact, impact our bottom line. We have non-referendum debt, so that's nearing completion. But this year's payment versus next year, might sound little, but it's a $5,200 increase. I've identified it. And that, again, why is that there? It steals from the general fund to make sure that we pay that obligation. One of the other ones that I know is important to you, as well as the community, we have our Capital Funds Trust, which is our Fund 41. That dollar amount, when we created it several years ago, we've been utilizing that for a while, but we said that every year would have a 4% increase. That 4% increase off of about $1.6, $1.7 million is a $60,000 expense increase from this year to next year. The other area that I don't have a dollar amount, because currently we have an actuarial study with our other post-employment benefit trust, the contribution from this year to next year is going to stay the same at about $1.6 million from our general fund into that special trust for our retiree benefits. That can hold flat. I just wanted to identify that it's there. If something changed, we would identify a dollar amount within this area. So I'm going to scroll up quickly. We took a look at the revenues, what's going on with increases and decreases. And again, this is utilizing all of those federal dollars at this point in time. We've taken a look at what could happen with the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, for wages and related benefits, unchanged. Okay? Continuing the health insurance, continuing bus routes, all of those other expenses. But when we take a look at this, we have about a $620,000 increase in overall revenues, but we have about a $3 million increase in expenditures. So we're addressing at this point in time, utilizing all those federal dollars, $2.4 million deficit. This is not new to our district. We make adjustments every year. I've not seen districts come together such as ours over the past three years that have been a part of this process. We collaborate, we come together. That's the next step. So I don't want to steal Mr. Hansen's thunder, as he's taking a look next and sharing some information about staffing. We need to make sure we right-size our district. We may, need to make sure that we're looking at class sizes, where I'd mentioned earlier, where we're using the federal dollars for program enhancement, COVID mitigation. We need to make sure that we understand what that looks like moving forward, to be able to deliver that balanced budget that we've done the last several years. So it's a fair amount of information. We'll work together and we'll make this happen. But I wanted to be able to share that where we are at this point in time.
Questions?
Question. Obviously, you're presenting numbers and some challenges we have going forward. Let's talk about past history. Just, I'd like to touch on that, because we've had some perception, some comments at our public participation. I've been emailed some comments on just what's happened in the past, and what is our current even tax rate. I just have a personal story. I compared my tax, I grew up in Greendale, Wisconsin. I live in West Bend now, obviously. Our mill rate here is $7.98. It's been the same for the last three years. The average mill rate in the state of Wisconsin is 9.44. We're about 18% under the mill rate. Doing some own self-evaluation, I looked at what my good friend's tax bill, similar-sized house, he pays $1,000 more taxes in Greendale than I do. Similar size, estimated value. So I'm just saying, we've treated every tax dollar preciously. We obviously have had growth, and correct me if I'm wrong in any of these statements, we've had growth in our overall property value. And I know, so there have been comments, well, you're taking in more money in taxes. That is true, because the property value has gone up. Our mill rates have remained flat. The question is, what are you doing with that extra money you're taking in, in taxes? If I would reference three things, the board was directed to pay down debt. There's $9 million we've saved over the last, what, three, four years, that is sitting in a fund to pay down our $24 million in debt down to 15 million. 15 million, again, for those even listening aboard, way less than Slinger in debt, way less than Keewaskam. These are smaller districts around us. So I say, we're listening to the community, and we're trying to treat every tax dollar precious. We obviously have challenges going forward. You referenced salaries and income, that inflation and wage pressures, $2 million for us in your reference. So there's obviously challenges going forward, but maybe I'll just say, we're up to the challenges. We want to keep as much of our teaching staff, teaching good quality education, and put our money in face of our class as a top priority, but maintain fiscal conservative note with our debt. So I just thought, correct me if I'm wrong on any of the statements I've made, and maybe you can comment on those, Andy.
I think that's a great point and reflection. I think that's a question that Andy and I have talked about with public as well. You know, if this is flat, but my taxes went up, how, how did that kind of happen? Like you said, what, what's, what's happening there? I know you've got a, as easy as you can make the explanation for the public who doesn't have the background in finance, because school finance is, you know, I know we've all often said it's complicated, but if you can uncomplicate it for viewers, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah. So, and again, I think, I think it would be helpful at some point in time, we've got the Finance 101, that's, that's very near completion. But simply stated, revenue limits were put in place in 1993. What they did at that time was said, whatever you spent per student last year, we're going to freeze that. And from now on, whether it was, at that point in time, I could be ridiculous and say, $5,000 versus another district at $10,000. You were frozen. Every biennial budget includes a dollar amount for each of the two years that that state budget includes, talking about some type of change. Historically, it's been $150, $200. There's a low-spending provision. That's where we were impacted the last couple of years. We're literally, it was picking us up, pulling us up slightly, $50, $100 extra the last two years. So that, those revenue limits have been in place. The only time outside of what the state permits is if there's an operational referendum. Many districts have the opportunity to bring that referendum question in front of taxpayers and ask for additional funding to be either built in for a period of time or forever. I think we've gone to operational referendum one time, right around the 2000s. It did not pass. We've not, we've not brought that forward. But that's where the state controls our revenue limits. So when you take a three-year average of students multiplied by the revenue limit dollar per student, we're literally within pennies of $10,000. Again, because we got brought up to that amount last year, that's when we start calculating our total dollars available to us. We add in some things that are called exemptions. We pull out some things that are exemptions, like, as I'd mentioned, the declining enrollment. We get to hold on to dollars for just one extra year. It's recalculated without that. But there's the revenue limits. We then have two funding sources. When you think about the revenue limit equals state aid, that's the one large funding source, plus property taxes, it's really the revenue limit minus the state aid, what's left are property taxes. That state aid, it's, I call it the one-legged stool. There's a formula. There's a three-tiered method. It's all based on how property-rich a district is. The more property-rich a district is, the less money the state is willing to give as a part of that general state aid. So we've seen slight increases in our revenue limit the last couple of years, because the state budget allowed for that. But our property value's been increasing slightly faster than the state, and we've been having declining enrollment. That makes us look more property-rich. So the one thing I wanted to correct with you is, what did we do with this extra money? We consider the declining enrollment, there's dollars that get taken away every year because of our declining enrollment. We factor all of that into the revenue limit worksheet. I make that a part of the, a part of the September annual meeting. But we factor all of that in when we set the final budget in October. But it really comes down to, how property-rich are we? How much money is the state giving us because of that? What's left? And that's what we levy, which is a dollar rate. And you take that levy, dollar rate divided by property values, that's our mill rate or our percentage. So when you think about like a sales tax, I'm going to go over to Kohl's and buy a t-shirt. How much do you pay in sales tax? Five and a half percent? It's been the same since like 1980. Chris, you might know this.
How long it's been?
1981, 1984, 1978.
Sales tax?
Something like that. I thought, I thought you might, quite a while. But a t-shirt at Kohl's costs more now than it did when that same sales tax was put in place in, back in 1980, in the early 80s.
Andy, could you just speak to declining enrollment? I feel like it's such a negative, like, oh, you have declining enrollment. But so many of the neighboring districts have the same thing. And some of that is, it's not that people are, you know, flocking out of West Bend. It's the fact that people are having smaller families, and, you know, we're a much more mobile society. I mean, I know Waukesha just had a giant thing on TV about potentially closing an elementary school. And they obviously cited declining enrollment and, and that type of thing. So could you speak to that? I mean, I, obviously, we're not the only district suffering from declining enrollment.
No. There are, there are a number of districts, and I don't, I don't know how many out of the 420 school districts, but a number of districts across the state in various areas that have declining enrollment. In our area, we have some beautiful family homes that don't have kids. We have some empty nesters. We have some people that love their home. They want to stay there. But it'd be wonderful for a new family, just married, start having kids, and come through our school system. But we have an aging population or a community. We just signed a contract to move forward with the Applied Population Lab. They have a lot of those demographics, and we're going to start taking a look at that. Because our community, short of Jackson, that there is, are some developments, but we have minimal growth in the West Bend area, and we haven't had the turnover. So what's a result is, we're graduating this year about 524 seniors, and next year, we're going to get in about 350 to 375 kindergarteners. That's what's causing, and you can actually see it when you take a look at the 4K or 5K through 12th grade, and that enrollment trend, and it's hitting the tail end of Silverbrook, and it's going to start edging its way into Badger. And why it's not a bad word with declining enrollment is, we've always done it, we always will do it, is making sure that we right-size our district. Making sure that we employ the appropriate staff to look at the class sizes that you've spoke about in the past, to make sure that we're delivering instruction for our kids. Thank you for asking that.
I appreciate the fact that you've brought up the Finance 101, because this stuff is complicated. And I know you are more than willing to sit down with, with people from the community, even one-on-one, to discuss school district finance and how it works for us here in West Bend. So I'm glad you brought that up tonight, because a lot of people don't understand it. And a lot of people believe whatever they might read on blogs or Facebook pages. But if, this is an invitation to anybody in the community, if you want to understand, you know, how, how we do our budget and where the dollars come from, then call Andy and schedule a meeting. Go to these Finance 101 classes that you talked about tonight, because we are, we are an open book here as far as our budget goes. Before the annual meeting last fall, we had three different meetings talking about our budget, and then talked about it again at the annual meeting. And then, two weeks later, a gentleman spoke up here and admitted that he didn't understand it. And so, please reach out and schedule a meeting with Andy or the superintendent, and go through that so that you understand your tax bill.
And even if it's not wanting to schedule an individual meeting, just even giving us a sense of where the questions are, as Andy puts together, as he said, kind of that 101, would be helpful. Or things that you find confusing, just help get us that feedback. So as he frames that opportunity for people and makes that accessible, whether it's on the website and some pieces that would be visually being able to convey messages, or, like you said, in a forum or a small group, it would be really welcome.
Any other questions? Andy, thank you. Appreciate the update. And next, we have preliminary 22-23 staffing plan priorities. We welcome Mr. Hansen back to the podium.
Thanks, Tim. So Andy tells you how much money we have, and now we got to decide how we're going to- So Andy tells you how much money we have, and now we got to decide how we're going to spend it, right? And that's really, like Andy said, a really great collaborative process here where we pull in, okay, what are the focuses here of teaching, learning, student services? On the operational side as well, how are we going to allocate our dollars to make the most impact? So what I'm going to do tonight is really the first of kind of three meetings where we'll have discussion. Tonight is a general discussion around priorities. We're going to do a little bit of where we've been, how we've allocated some resources this current year and in past year, as well as how we can set some priorities for next year, as well as hear the board's feedback on that. Then the plan would be, at our next meeting, we'd propose the more formal staffing plan, specifically, you know, mostly focused on the certified staff side, get discussion from that, at that point. And then from there on, at our third meeting, bring forth that staffing plan for approval. That timeline aligns with all of the statutory requirements around when we need to offer contracts or non-renewal of contracts to staff and those sorts of things. So that's really what drives the timeline on that. A lot of what I'm going to share tonight is very similar to the same presentation I gave last year, because a lot of things about what we care about, what we're passionate about, don't change. Our biggest drivers around what create that staffing plan are student needs, enrollment, and budget. Student needs means several things, right? It means academic support, which, you know, people think of, oh, my child's classroom teacher, right? But that's a critical component of it, but not the only component. We have staff, we have support staff, we have intervention staff, special education staff. There's a ton of different people that factor into those supports. Then you think from the student services side, in terms of counseling, psychology, all of those other supports that we provide, that give that comprehensive wraparound service to our students. And then ensuring that we have equal access to all of our learners. Learners who don't speak English, for example, learners who have very unique special education needs, all of those things. So as Andy said, we've done a lot this year to really try and get after the needs of our students. We knew that coming out of the pandemic, or being still in it at, you know, at this time, but hopefully coming out of it, we knew there were increased needs, both in the return year in September of 2020, as well as this current year, when we came back in '21, '22. So we had a perfectly balanced budget, but we knew that we had these federal dollars that provide an opportunity for some, addressing some of the gaps that were created by the pandemic. And I want to share a little bit of the strategic actions that we took around that, which there's quite a few. A lot of these are for this current year, a few of them maybe started the prior year and then expanded this year. In terms of academic support, we did a lot. We provided success coaches for students who were kind of in that in-between group of students who maybe weren't qualifying for as many formal interventions, but maybe would be students that were struggling with some academic pieces at Badger. We added a gap closing position at Silverbrook. We added three additional high school teachers in math, ELA, and in social studies who specifically worked with high school kids to help them deal with those gaps. Additional reading intervention, math intervention, to ensure we had consistent support across the schools for those needs. The other thing we saw this past year is we saw much more fluctuation in enrollment, both right before the school year started, as well as the year has gone on. We've been used to having, once we kind of get to August, things kind of level out. And then throughout the school year, we have some ins and outs, but not a ton. You know, I think the result of the pandemic, people moving, having different learning opportunities and returning to the face-to-face environment this year, created a lot more fluctuation for us. And then we responded to that by not just having larger class sizes, but when we saw class sizes grow a little bit, adding support staff, aides, more aides in the classrooms and things like that to address that. From the student services side, there's tons of needs as well that we knew we wanted to address coming out of a pandemic. We expanded school psychologists, we added family liaisons, more special education teachers and aides, ELL staff, district-wide behavior support staff as well. And then also working with our partners in our parochial schools. We significantly expanded the amount of service that we were providing at those parochial schools for special education evaluation and services as well so that we could ensure that those partners are able to also provide those services to students who need them. Alternative education, alternative program offerings, you see here. We really settled in on a really strong virtual program this year. We have a program administrator, Aaron Faust, who's done a great job really solidifying that program for us, bringing staff on board for that. We increased alternative education staff, and then some of the other pieces that you see as well. On top of those more learning-focused services, there were other services that were more operational in nature that we added this year. We had nine additional daytime custodians who circulated our buildings, keeping surfaces clean and things like that. Certainly, we've learned a lot more around how COVID-19 and the coronavirus itself spreads, and we've been able to adjust to that. But really, we wanted to ensure that we had that really safe environment. We needed additional healthroom support. We talked earlier about, you know, contact tracing. I mean, that is thousands of hours of phone calls that existed out of our healthrooms that didn't previously exist before COVID. So we had additional staff to make that happen and get good communication in a prompt manner to our families. And then, as Mr. Sarno talked about, additional absence management. Actually, this year was a more challenging year than even the prior year in terms of managing absences, and that required a substantial investment in substitutes. So where are those class sizes? It's always like the number one question, especially at the elementary level. So I tried to highlight those here for you. So you can see they all fit within kind of our general historical norm. But I will say, at some of these areas, particularly in those primary levels, like kindergarten, some of those lower levels, we have allocated several additional aides throughout the system in buildings where we saw a lot of either very late enrollment or enrollment in the middle of the year. You know, if we start having a little bit of a growing class, we don't just say the teacher, good luck. You know, we post, we hire additional aides and provide support within those classrooms. So as we look ahead to next year, certainly, we have, you know, as each year, we come in and we look and say, okay, what's our budget situation? But, you know, aside from needing to balance the budget, we need to balance budget in a way that impacts students. So Mr. Sarno talked about some of the budgetary considerations, but some of the three primary ones that factor into my thinking are, first of all, what he talked about regarding the state budget being flat. We will now have three straight years at the same per pupil level per the state budget, right? So our total revenue level not increasing, but dealing with things, in addition to dealing with the need to kind of catch up, you know, coming out of a pandemic, on top of inflation. Everybody in this room is feeling that at home. The district feels it as well with inflating costs as well. Inflation, both in terms of services, operations, but also in staff. As we all know, wages have grown throughout the entire country in several key areas. The district is not immune from that, and the board, you know, took some actions earlier this year to address that. Otherwise, we would not be able to recruit staff, and we'd have tons of vacant positions. And then on top of that, as Mr. Sarno talked about, the federal aid is not recurring. Now, the state has indicated that we should use the federal aid that we are receiving to kind of live on that until it ends. And then, you know, we're hoping that the state then comes through and then kind of replaces that aid, since the state is kind of taking a little break in terms of those additional expenses. But we need to be mindful of that because there's no guarantee about what will replace the federal support when it disappears. So we need to be mindful. Mr. Sarno talked about the enrollment phenomenon, so I thought I'd kind of graph it out for you here in a simple way. You really, this graph does a great job really showing how at those lower grades, we're really hitting, you know, that flattening out piece. So now what we're really just seeing is that enrollment level matriculating through the rest of the grades. But we really kind of hit the bottom of that trend already through, you know, for, this is for next year, but through the first half of our grades, right? And now it's just a matter of that moving through the system. In terms of enrollment implications, we do expect to see fewer sections throughout the system next year. We've seen that year after year for a few years now. We're coming to the end of that in the elementary level with probably only a small reduction for next year in terms of number of sections. But now, again, that'll go through our intermediate, middle, and high school levels. As always, attrition is our preferred method for dealing with a reduction in the number of sections, whether those are individuals on one-year contracts or retirements and those sorts of things. But if we do not receive the number of resignations, retirements, et cetera, necessary, then we would use our reduction in force policy, which exists for making those, you know, very difficult decisions around how we adjust staffing for fewer sections. So talk about priorities. Talk about what do we want to do around learning for next year? I already reviewed the many, many things that we did to support our students above kind of the basic, you know, norm of, here's a classroom teacher, and here's a curriculum, go teach. We added all those other things. But what do we want to do moving forward, right? With a deficit, you know, we have to figure out which pieces are working and which ones, you know, we want to swoop in and make some adjustments for. So, you know, we are currently and have been reviewing the data on several of those opportunities that I discussed earlier, which ones were highly successful, which ones were mildly successful, which ones are worth keeping or expanding, which ones are things that we want to allocate those resources in a different way for next year. Like I said, our virtual program option this year has worked out really well. We want to be able to maintain that option. There's well over 100 students that take advantage of that, and that's a win for everybody, including the families and the district. Anyway, one of the bigger things from a curricular standpoint, we've been committed for several years to this model where we embed a literacy coach within each school. That's really key to the growth that we want to see within literacy, and we're committed to maintaining that. In terms of student service supports, I already looked at, you know, I already examined a lot of those position pieces, and they've made a huge impact. We need to identify which positions have been most impactful for us so that we can maintain that and invest heavily there. And we also want to, we, and looking, working with Ms. Melstrand, who's stepped away for a minute, but she and I have been in a lot of communication around what we can do around behavioral supports and things like that for students and for staff coaching in that area as well. From the kind of third leg of that stool of what counts, you know, what falls into student need, the equal access to education, we really, with Ms. Melstrand this year, really dove deep into creating a better system for ongoing monitoring of our special education staffing needs throughout the year, which resulted in a number of adjustments as the year went on. We saw a large influx of special education students to our system that were new to district, and we were able to respond to that, add staff as that occurred. That's a much more unpredictable piece of the enrollment puzzle. You know, you might have one student who has no special education needs enroll, you place them in a classroom, and, you know, the classroom teacher just adds in their number. You can have another student who comes to us with significant needs, and we're here to serve those, but they can come at great cost of both staffing and other supports. We have to be prepared to respond to that quickly. We were this year, thanks to the partnership I had with the student services team. And we need to maintain that, but that costs money as well. And then we also want to continue to do a longstanding practice in this district, which is really analyzing data around student needs, especially students on the lower end of our percentiles in terms of reading and math, so we allocate our intervention staff appropriately. So those are the big picture priorities that we have pulled out. But we also want to know, you know, are they aligning with the direction that, you know, the district and the board, you know, feel we need to be heading? There's a lot of pieces to that puzzle. It's never a simple equation. We have 6,000 students. Each of those 6,000 students is unique in their needs and what we need to do to bring to them. So like kind of described, next steps, we'll have a brief, some discussion tonight around priorities that we need to have, perhaps in addition to what I've described here. And that'll help us then bring forth in two weeks a staffing plan that would include the priorities here and any additional input and feedback from the board. So that's a lot of information, because there's a lot that goes into spending, you know, the tens of millions of dollars that come our way to support students. But that's what we're here for. Without a quality staffing plan, we will not reach our goals. So it's important that everybody is collaborative and onboard together.
Thank you. Any feedback or questions for Mr. Hanson?
Of course.
Go for it.
First of all, I'd like to say, I think it's critical that we continue to look at the mental health of our students. And I'm very proud of the amount of school psychologists that we have and liaisons and those type of things. I also think that educational aides, whether they be special ed or regular general ed aides, are critical to student success because there's no way any of us in our jobs could handle 23 customers all coming to us at one time needing, you know, your undivided attention without the help of those aides. So, you know, for me, as a school board member, those pieces are very critical, as well as, you know, I want to make sure that our students', you know, reading is up to par. I also want to make sure that we're graduating, you know, great little citizens who will one day either go to work, go to college, or, you know, hopefully stay in West Bend and do great things. So I really can't say enough how important I think those positions are, and I would not want to see us at any cost cut those. I would sooner see us, I'll say some ugly words, but I would sooner see us cut some of our buildings or look at combining some of our elementary schools long before we have to cut down on services.
I appreciate your comments about aides. We have over 200 aides. You know, we have over 400 teachers, but without those 200 aides, both special education and then, you know, other classroom and general supervisor, all those pieces, they are critical to delivering our program. As I think back to my days as a principal here in our district, our classroom aides, I mean, they, we gave them great training, and they would lead guided reading groups. They were leading instruction within the classroom. They expanded significantly the capacity of the teacher to reach all of the kids even more than they would be by themselves. So I agree with you.
I mean, I want all of these to be priorities, but obviously, that's not going to happen. I'm going to echo Nancy on the student supports piece. I'm really excited that we have what we do in each school, having a social worker, psychologist, in schools. I think that's especially key right now. I mean, we talked about behaviors. We talk about coming back from different learning environments because of COVID. If our students aren't supported with their mental health, whatever we do in the classroom's not going to matter. So I think that's really key. And I would echo the talk about aides. I remember, it's been a while since I was in an elementary classroom, but seeing them work with small groups of kids and taking maybe a little bit off the teacher to be able to focus on like one reading level at a table with an aide, that's crucial in bringing our kids around to all being really supported with English or any other subject, for that matter.
On the student services side, I mean, we've really been able to develop a really comprehensive team at every school, between those liaisons, the psychologists and the counselors. We have a robust team at each building, which I think is needed to meet the needs that you're talking about.
Go ahead, Kurt.
Yeah, I just have, this is an excellent list. I would agree with your presentation. Thank you for being proactive, which is key, proactive and getting the support and feedback from all of us and the community. I would add safety and security. Would like to maybe highlight that. I know we increased our resource officers to four from three recently within the last two years. And we get good support from our local police. That goes along with what Nancy and Aaron said on mental health. I think there's more challenging behaviors going on, not only in our district, in the country. So we all want to be safe and secure, so.
You're correct that nationwide, there's more challenging behaviors, but it doesn't matter. We need to meet the need. I mean, no matter what, that's our responsibility, and we need the staff to do it, and that's our commitment. In terms of feedback as well, we solicit feedback from the administration, from all the building administrators, and then we've also put out there to staff members, ideas that they have. You know, we need every innovation that's out there. We ask them to speak to their building leaders about, you know, not just things we want, but why will it work? Why is A better than B, right? We have scarce resources, so we have to prioritize. So we want their input on that. And we hope in future years to even expand that ability to have staff input into the staffing plan, which is difficult, right? You're talking about each other's jobs and what you prioritize. And we all feel, obviously, in whatever organization we're in, that we're making a huge impact. But we want to hear, where do people feel we get the most bang for our buck? And people are pretty honest when you can have those conversations. From HR, we do building hours one day a week at every building throughout the year. I'm at every building five, six times. And people come to us with good ideas, and a lot of those ideas at building hours end up being put into action. So we need that input.
I like that you're, sorry, Nancy. I like that you're talking to staff. What a way to engage them and help make decisions that are going to affect them. They're the boots on the ground. They can see what they need, and they know our district, and they know we are not made of money. So I feel like the ideas that are going to come out of there are going to be useful and be able to be implemented.
Just a quick thought, and you can say heck no, and our officers might say heck no to this. But obviously, going back to, you know, you can't no to this, but obviously, going back to, you know, you can't be everywhere in a building, and obviously, behavior is a concern. Is there, you know, are other districts throughout the United States having any luck with any other, like, liaison styles? So, I mean, obviously, we have our police officers who will handle really major situations, but I'm just talking, you know, teachers have a lot to do with just dealing with what's going on in the classroom, and, you know, sometimes we might have a student who needs some special help inside the classroom, so the teacher might miss that hallway particular behavior. I mean, are other districts having any luck with, you know, some nice, friendly retired police officers who are looking for a gig, and maybe they want to spend some time in some hallways, just giving them a stern look?
I think, you know, to your point, right? Being present, I can't remember what meeting we were in, but we were talking about, you know, if I'm driving down the street and there's an officer present, and I might slow down. No one listened to that. But that visibility matters, and as you said, you're highly engaged students in the classroom, maybe meeting them at the door and attending to something. How do we support even just supervision and being visible as a deterrent as well? So it doesn't even need to be, like you said, at that level, but what are that? We've been highly engaged in all of our networks, whether it's superintendents, HR staff, around what are those high-leverage positions? Student services staff particularly really understanding the need. As we said, it's, we're not unique, but we're committed and won't use that as an excuse because we're here to serve our students, and this is what it looks like right now, and we clearly need to respond differently. We've talked about some, just as we're committed to literacy coaches, you know, some behavioral coaches, and putting together high-quality plans and disrupting behaviors, we've talked about opportunities such as that, or, as you said before, the value of those family liaisons who serve and expanding those roles or some of those success coaches. So again, when you're looking at kind of all avenues, there's a whole range, and as Lenny said, I think he's done a really nice job in soliciting that input, not just from leaders, but also from all staff members, and that we're looking critically at things. Just because we've always had something, was that working, and does it need to change to something like that now? What is really needed, so.
I would say our budgetary situation has made us much more creative and innovative than a lot of other districts. Our resources are scarce, and that's not an excuse for us to not meet our mission. So we are, in terms of the types of positions we have, I find we have a lot more innovation than a lot of the other district leaders that I talk to. You know, the liaison position alone is one you don't see very often in other districts, and I, when I tell people what kind of mileage we get out of those positions, they're amazed. Our liaisons, our support staff, and, you know, they're not benefited staff, and yet the impact they make is immense. I think because of our need to, you know, stay within our budgetary constraints while also meeting a really diverse set of student needs, we come up with some pretty creative ideas. I lead a support staff advisory team. We met last week, and we had people come forth with an idea around mentorship. It was actually nutrition employees, like, hey, we could pick up some extra hours if you wanted us to, you know, make some connections with kids, kind of what Ms. Schneider was talking about, having those connections with students at any level. We have a lot of really passionate, committed people in every department, not just teachers. Nutrition people brought that forth, right? Like, we look for those innovative ideas, and mentorship would be one thing you see, if you're asking kind of nationwide, people experimenting with ways to integrate that more, because you're right, teachers have a lot to do, and they want to make those connections with kids, but there's other people at our disposal who can also, you know, make an impact that way.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, our new police chief, I know, is very involved. He's had students in our district. I know the sheriff is, you know, highly involved as well, and I know that there are a lot of, you know, police officers who retire early, who would love to come down and help us, I'm sure, if we just called them and asked them and begged them. So I think if we explore some of that, you know, maybe not even a police officer, but just, you know, someone who can be extra eyes in the building, you know, I applaud the way that we have come up with some super creative ways to reach people, and I know our budget is small, but this is clearly a concern. And so as we're looking at creative ways, I would love to, you know, see you and your team come up with something extra creative as far as behavior.
We employ several former police officers, so we're always welcoming.
Maybe drill sergeants. Maybe we could go to the Army or something, I don't know.
Those are the creative ideas we need.
So you mentioned this, so can you tell us what can we expect at the next board meeting, and then the one following?
We'll be talking specifics about the number of sections at each level that we'll be needing to provide kind of homeroom, you know, core and elective teachers for. We'll focus mostly on the instructional side, as well as some support side, but especially on the instructional side of the house. That's where the vast majority of our expenses come from, so when you're talking about where we're going to leverage resources to meet those budgetary needs, that's probably, probably it's by far the number one spot, and especially around certified staff, because, as I said, those statutory requirements around when we need to offer contracts or nonrenewal of contracts, those come up in April, so we have to be prepared for those pieces, for sure. Support staff positions aren't contracted, so, you know, the timeline on that is slightly delayed compared to the certified.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we move to the action items on our agenda, and the first one is the Mythology Anthology Text Primary Resource Adoption. Laura Jackson is going to walk us through that, and this is a follow-up to an item that we had for discussion on our last agenda, if I remember.
That is correct. So curriculum committee took a look at the resource, and the classroom teachers who currently teach our mythology class had joined that meeting for a brief period, and then we spoke about it at our last board meeting. Since that time, the resource had been at the library and here at the ESC for anybody who wanted to provide feedback. All of the feedback that was provided was included in the board information for today, and so you can see that we had two responses to that. The, and I last checked it at about 6 o'clock tonight, so to double-check if there was any more updating that needed to be done, and you have all the information there. We were able to get a significant reduction in the price, because it is listed at $29 per book, and we were able to get that for $16. So should the board approve this, we'll move forward with the purchase of that anthology to replace the current ones in use. Same text, but an earlier version of that text.
I was just going to make the motion to approve the purchase of the Mythology: Timeless Tales of Gods and Heroes by Edith Hamilton as a primary resource in the mythology course.
I'll second. Oh, Joel's got it.
I think Joel beat you to that just barely. Motion second to approve the adoption of the Mythology Anthology Text Primary Resource. Final discussion. All in favor? Please, roll call. Thank you. Like I said, old habits die hard. Roll call lists. All right, Mr. Fisher is absent. Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Swigert votes yes. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
What's yes? Ms. Justman?
Yes.
And Mr. Angert?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move on then to first reading of policies for approval and removal, and second reading of policies for approval and removal. And, go ahead.
Just a reminder that, just waiting for our team member, there will be no action on any of these pieces this evening, so they'll roll forward, so if there's any discussion. Our committee had met to disaggregate those policies. It took two sessions. That's why you're seeing different sets. So the first reading of policies for approval is a new set for you. It's taking, we spent a considerable amount of time on 672 purchasing to do an overarching policy that sets some limits and boundaries from the board's perspective of what and when things come forward, and then we really dug into a lot of supplementary policies with different concepts, and we're combining those into procedural manuals, process pieces, as well as accompanying ARs. So what you see is just the policy portion of 672. We continue to take our language in the purchasing piece around our commitment to local purchasing and just carried that forward right onto the end of this overview. That was important to us as a team as well, so you'll see those pieces. The next policy in alignment was a very specific one around a suspension and debarment of vendors and contractors. That's a recommended policy to have on there. And then the last one that we created is now going to be 831. It was sitting in the 700 series. Recall, we were focused on the 6 and 700 series. It was previously labeled as 734. The appropriate coding for 734 is about playgrounds, so we took the opportunity to update the number, as well as the language, on restrictions on tobacco, nicotine, and vapor products. It covers expectations for students, for staff, of a variety of locations, including vendors such as our bus transportation. It includes spaces we might rent, you know, if you're going to an off-site field trip, or if you're renting a location for prom, whatever's a school sanctioned event, and it lays out those expectations. So those were the three that represent new language. Are there any comments, feedback from board members regarding these pieces? And again, we'll see these again, so if in the interim, something strikes you, please just reach out. That next set is a first reading policies for removal, and I kind of put each one. Recall that there was significant amount of policy that was outdated or misnumbered, so as we looked at replacing considerable amounts of language, I kind of mapped where it's going. We had a 672.1 bidding procedures, 672.2, that local purchasing, that I just tacked on to the 672. 672.5 purchasing emergencies, I see a typo there. It's all in the 672 kind of overview policy, as well as accompanying materials and process, so their concepts don't go away, they just get folded into language and process. And then, as far as the 700 series consideration for removal, we have employee visitor identification badges. This is something that's present in our handbooks that we wear those, so it doesn't need to be so stated in policy. There's other visitor pieces that we follow for non-staff members. 733 had a component of energy management conservation that's actually sitting within the job responsibilities of the director of buildings and grounds. And again, 734, mislabeled and old language as tobacco similar products disallowed, was a replacement with an updated policy. So you'll see that while it looks like we're removing, they're being folded in, language is being updated, and they're appropriately numbered. So these were the work of the February 11 meeting from the committee. Any questions about those? Great. And again, they'll come back. The second reading, these were ones that had come to the full board prior, and I made them just kind of the approval, and I left all the notes in, kind of where did that content come from, why was it being changed, that kind of piece. So again, it's not that we're getting rid of a whole bunch and adding a bunch, we're just making those connections there. There was one, well, two pieces that have shifted. We took some feedback from the board on a couple items. I had feedback from an audience member in relation to 187. We talked largely at that time around shifting that preamble and attending to just current process and how we were reiterating those things, but specifically in this policy, it notes that someone's address, while we no longer request it at the podium, we verify address that they're qualified to speak for public speaking on their comment cards, those stay private. It notes that their address is published in the minutes, and we had a request, and the committee weighed that it is not necessary to publish someone's home address, in that it's required for us to verify that and have that. We talked as a committee, and we're very comfortable with adding that additional strike-through onto that policy, that we would continue to give the name and that content piece, so people understood what public comments were about those pieces, but there's just not a need to have that address.
So we're verifying that at the time, so Chris is, or who's ever presiding over the meeting, has given these, and then he's showing them to you or to someone to kind of check the address or whatever?
Right, so when you're filling out a public comment card, it says name, and it's kind of relation to the district, and they're giving their address in that moment. Those go, we staple them in a file, we number what order, and we keep them as part of archived records for a period of time, but again, we just wouldn't need to publish that.
So then at the time of a board meeting, if someone is trying to speak who's not allowed by policy, we can control that at the time and say, thank you, but no thanks?
Yes.
I suppose if there was, if I was sitting in that chair, if there was a street address that maybe I didn't recognize, we could certainly pause the meeting and just verify the address, that sort of thing.
And we, each district maintains a master register of all, every single street, every single, everything, so we can look those up easily if we have question. So we're generally able to verify, but if there's question, there's time allowed to do so, and that was another reason, to your point, that the committee felt it wasn't necessary in the minutes, as long as we have that verification process in place. So that was one change since our first reading, is to, again, just strike through that address is included in minutes. And then also, we talked a lot about fund balance and the potential to insert additional language into policy. I think it was Mrs. Justman who noted and talked about, you know, using that overarching range of 10 to 15% in fund balance, but we had a lot of discussion around that belongs more heavily in a continuous improvement plan that has short and long-term goals and benchmarks so that we can be responsive in those pieces. So we just talked about putting it in there, so you'll see that there was no additional language added after our conversation. Those were the only two changes based on our previous conversation in that slate. Any other questions on those? And again, I've called out those two separately, instead of having to scroll through all those, so you can see those attached. And then the last is the second reading policies for removal. Again, same thing, as we cleaned up, adopted new language, incorporated items in other, more appropriately numbered. You can see that map, this would sunset that old language, and as Mr. Angert said, we don't want to be in a position to sunset some and not have some approved. We want to do that as one whole set, so we'll kind of re-combobulate these and bring them forward again. Were there any questions? Again, the board, the full board has seen this slate as well prior.
So hearing no additional questions, these will come back to the next meeting. Like you said before, we aren't taking action on them tonight, but we'll consider them again next meeting.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. So it takes us to our future agenda items and our board meeting calendar. So looking forward, we have a curriculum committee meeting on March 1 at 8:00 a.m. here at the Education Service Center, and then our regular board meetings scheduled for 5:30 p.m. on March 7 and March 21, also here at the Education Service Center. I believe that's it for the calendar. Any questions on that? Any other items for follow-up and communication beyond the ones that we had talked about earlier?
Any decision on school tomorrow?
Well, I'm monitoring the text, and it looks like the area, there's a few of us still in board meetings, and a couple are calling it right now, so it's looking like predominantly the area around us, adjacent to us, is closing for tomorrow. I will make sure and join the conversations as soon as I can and get word out to our families and staff regarding our plans for the morning.
No word yet.
I'll get on it right away.
One other question. I had gotten some inquiry about the school calendar and the timing for releasing the school calendar.
Yes, we should have that at our next board meeting for discussion. It'll go out to families and full staff for those inputs, and then bring that forward, and it'll be the two years.
Perfect. Aaron?
If tomorrow is a snow day, is going to be a true snow day?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there snow required on the ground for that?
She has for her children right now. Come on, come on.
Yes, while we ask everyone to be well-prepared, as far as staff is concerned, for the possibility of needing to teach remotely, we still continue to have families that do not have reliable internet access, those pieces. We'd make sure that we have our auxiliary childcare open. Again, people have already been noticed of those programs, but we want to make sure that we have something that's accessible and productive. We know what a hardship it can be when we call school, that families, especially with little ones, may or may not have the ability to pull that off with short notice, so we just want to be respectful of that.
Great. All right, we have reached the end of our planned and published agenda, and so I would move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
I can answer your motion and second to adjourn, and I will call the roll. I will remember this. Thank you. All right, Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher is absent. Mr. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Mr. Angert?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for joining our meeting tonight.